Thank you all for coming. For the record, this is a live way of... Before I can start on, I'll say one thing pretty important today. I hope it hits everybody sitting out there. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. And if any of you guys that serve in our military, would y'all please stand up? I want to personally thank you for doing what you did and allowing us to serve you tonight. So, once again, thank you. Our first item of business will be the approval of our October invoices. We have a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve October invoices.
Motion by Ms. Marvell. Second by Ms. Smith. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Next item of business is the approval of the September twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen minutes. That time's look over. Second by Ms. Caldwell. Second by Ms. Smith. And that's that of business is the approval of the October thirtieth, twenty sixteen.
Any questions?
Okay. Motion by Ms. Marvell. Second. Ms. Caldwell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Approval of October again. Motion by Mr. Solsky.
Second. Second. Second by Ms. Moran. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, opposed? Motion approved. Items for postponement and withdrawal.
The first item, Bevins Rural Residential is postponed.
Bevins Rural Residential subdivision plat. If anyone's here for that, that has been postponed. Anything else, Joe? We need a motion on that, Charlie? No?
No, not really, no.
Next item of business is a consent agenda. I think we have one, Joe?
One item, FSP two thousand sixteen dash fifty-five Raines property.
FSP two thousand sixteen dash fifty-five, the Raines property. Is anyone here against that application? It's the Raines property. It's a final subdivision plat. No one's here against that application? We'll take a motion for a consent on that, please.
I make a motion to consent FSP two thousand sixteen fifty-five Raines property.
I second it. Motion by Ms. Marvell. Who said?
I do.
Second by Mr. Cannon. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Okay, the first item, first application we're going to hear is PSP two thousand sixteen dash fifty-one, Abbey at Old Oxford, the Price Farm application. Since this is a Ball Homes application, I'll have to recuse myself from this application, please. Mark?
That's what I wondered. All right, I'll go ahead and get started.
Charlie, can he still listen to this? It's not...
Oh, he can listen. He just can't participate in any way. Oh, no, no, not up here, he shouldn't be.
Oh, he should, no, okay.
No, he's right about that. We just won't kick him out of the room. No, he doesn't need to be up there.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe. This is an amended preliminary subdivision plat request for the Abbey at Old Oxford. This is a subdivision that was rezoned around two thousand and one. Had a number of preliminary plats approved. The last preliminary plat approved was in two thousand and eight. This property is zoned R one C, or PUD, Plan Unit Development, which is a medium density, low density, single-family typically district. In this case, the PUD was approved with a multifamily component. So, the two thousand and eight plan was approved with two hundred and forty-nine multifamily units. But the overall density was limited to four point four units per net acre, which is the cap, density cap in the R one C district. This is a hundred and twenty-six acre parcel located on Old Oxford at the edge of town. You can see the entire farm in this aerial. After the preliminary was approved, construction plans in a final plat, construction plans were approved and then the infrastructure was installed and a final plat was approved for Phase One, which is this front section. So, there is a section that's already built out there. The property went through, with the downturn, the economy went through some rough times. The original developer gave the property back to the bank in lieu of foreclosure and it was purchased by Ball Homes. And Ball Homes actually constructed, is building out this section. So, Ball Homes owns Phase One or is building out Phase One. They're contemplating buying the rest of the farm. So, that's why they're coming now to amend the original plan to try and get a new lot arrangement that they can, that they're happy with. The original plan included the single-family areas in the front. It had some open space, a significant amount of open space running through the middle of the site and then along the western boundary. There's some wetlands and some wet areas through the middle of the site. They were going to keep that in open space. These are all single-family lots around the perimeter and then they had a number of multifamily building types, including townhomes, I think four-unit, six-unit, and eight-unit buildings. But it was mainly in the center area and then in pods around the open space. The open space consisted of this lowland areas, the drainage areas, and then a utility, overhead electrical utility easement, and then a number, a few pocket parks, two-pocket parks. So, the amendment that is before you tonight is generally the same road layout, the same entrance on, use of the Boulevard entrance on Herndon. But the main, I guess, to summarize, the main changes is to get rid of the multifamily in the center of the site and move it, convert it to attached townhomes and move it to the front of the site along Old Oxford to the east or north of this drainage area. So, now the townhomes will kind of be buffered from the rest of the development in the rear and adjacent to the existing Phase One. Other changes from the original plan, zoning, zoning condition and a condition placed on the previous preliminary plat is that no lots front on Herndon Road. That's the main entrance Boulevard, the main collector road that eventually was planned to connect to Pleasant Valley subdivision to the west. So, there was a condition that no lots front directly on Herndon. With this request, they're asking for five lots just in the center where the main road will transition from a Boulevard to a undivided roadway. They're asking for five lots fronting there on Herndon. We're recommending that they not, that they remove those lots and they don't make those, that direct driveway connection to Herndon for the main reason that they, that it's a Boulevard here in a main entrance to the subdivision. But also, there's no other lots fronting on it for the remainder. So, it might be a little bit of a safety hazard to have driveways kind of in the center of the development when you didn't have any kind of driveway access in the beginning and the end. So, we are recommending that that go away. As far as the road layout stays pretty much the same. Another, I guess, amenity in the original subdivision was a clubhouse for the multifamily area. That's going away as well. And also, a trail system that opened up and allowed access for all these lots that back up to the open space. A trail system that allowed better use and usability of that open space. That's not shown on the current plan. But we have asked that they retain that multi-use trail system and they have agreed to put that big in there. Other conditions of the original approval is that no more than a hundred and fifty lots be platted prior to the connection to Pleasant Valley. There are two connections shown to Pleasant Valley, one on the south side of the site and one on the north. They both will eventually be made. But there's a condition of zoning approval that those connections be made prior to the hundred and fiftieth lot be platted. I've added as a condition that includes townhome units. So, it would be either a hundred and fifty lots or a hundred and fifty units, whichever section or area develops first. Other conditions, they get the wetland areas. They get any required environmental permits from the Division of Water or Army Corps of Engineers. They're not doing much work in the wetlands area. They're kind of avoiding it with this main road and including a system of roads that avoid those wetland areas. But if they do disturb any of that, to the extent that it needs permitting, that they get that permitting. Generally, the road layout, there's good connectivity to future development areas. This is near the edge of the urban service boundary. So, we wouldn't anticipate much development near term in the area, especially to the north. But they are providing connectivity to adjoining farms, two to Pleasant Valley, and two possible connections to a road that could be located in this corridor of land that's owned partially by the developer Cherry Blossom subdivision, partially by the city of Georgetown, and partially by the developer of future phase of Pleasant Valley. And then there's two homeowners that own five-acre lots at each end. So, it's a possible corridor where arterial or collector road could be put in to relieve some of the traffic congestion. That's something that's going to be in our comprehensive plan, traffic master plan. And it's something that we anticipate the city and planning commission staff working towards getting that in future plans. But we want to make sure that there's the ability to connect to that. Old Oxford Road is a narrow road that needs to be widened. There have been, there is a requirement in our sub-rakes that allows us to require developers to widen substandard roads along their frontage as development occurs. And there's a requirement for Cherry Bloss, developers of Cherry Blossom to widen along their entire frontage, both the single-family and the multifamily area. The villages, the lanes run includes not just the area that's being developed now, but area across Lanes Run Creek. They're required to widen that frontage. There's other areas that are going to be the responsibility of either the city or the state, if they could partner with the state or the county or a combination of all three to get that, the remainder done. But that obviously needs to occur. I guess, to focus on this development here, on this particular piece of property, there is already an approved preliminary subdivision plat, as I mentioned. And the number of lots approved on this farm in the previous plan is five hundred and fifty-three units, including two hundred and forty-nine multifamily and the remainder single-family. So, this amended plan reduces that number to four seventy-seven and reduces the multifamily component from two forty-nine to one twenty-nine. There is some increase in the number of single-family lots. But overall, the density from the previous plan is reduced from four point four units per acre to three point eight five. So, it is a reduction in the development potential of this farm and its impact then on the road system. But that doesn't alleviate the need to widen Old Oxford Road. But they have done their work as part of Phase One. They did do their widening along their frontage already as part of Phase One. So, that has been completed. I think, this is, I just threw this in there if there are any questions. There are. This is the approved final plat for Phase One. It does include a landscape buffer along Old Oxford, which they plan to continue along the townhome section. I'm recommending that if approved tonight, the movement of the townhome section up to the front, that they continue that buffer along Herndon to provide a buffer between the, what we call multifamily, although they're just attached, single-family townhomes, but a multifamily to single-family, that they provide that buffer. There is a couple other issues that I don't, I don't want to get into too deeply, but I do need to mention. One is that the city recently passed in two thousand and fifteen an ordinance that requires developers to maintain a common scheme of development throughout from start to finish. And if they're going to change the common scheme, that they come back through the planning commission and they provide information on the new scheme and why they're, basically why market conditions have changed. That's that, in order for you to allow them to change the scheme. After talking with Andrew Hartley, the city attorney, who worked through the drafting of that ordinance, I guess he brought up three, kind of three points that are pertinent to this development in its meeting that ordinance. One, he said, basically, any future development of this farm needs to at a minimum meet the covenants and restrictions, the minimum level of covenants and restrictions in Phase One in the remainder. And from his review of this plan, this does in the sense that the first set of covenants and restrictions didn't limit the overall farm to only single-family development. So, the original approved plan included multifamily. So, the townhome component is not an increase in the density or a change in the overall scheme of development. That was anticipated in the beginning for the overall farm. But the rest of the farm in Phase One both need to be part of a new set of covenants and restrictions in HOA and a uniform HOA document that's in place for the entire farm. So, Phase One and the remainder both need to be part of an HOA. And the remainder of the farm can't, has to meet at least the minimum standards of Phase One, which essentially is going to be their burden to show it does. I think the documents that they've provided show it will. But they're going to have to show that prior to final plat approval for the remainder. The townhome section, since it is a different type of development, it's going to be developed as a whole, so not as individual lots for sale. So, that needs to be part probably of its own separate HOA or it can have its own scheme of covenants and restrictions as long as it meets the minimum standards of Phase One. But I think there's going to be some more issues that we need to make sure are addressed in the HOA or covenants and restrictions for the townhome section, particularly how they're going to maintain open space. We want to make sure that they pay into maintenance of open space in the overall subdivision. So, there's open space areas that go throughout the subdivision. They're going to have to make sure that they pay into the HOA to maintain those areas. And we'll have to make sure they, it's spelled out exactly what areas they will maintain if they're going to have increased maintenance responsibilities. For instance, for that pond area, detention area that's shown in, just in the townhome section. So, there's some issues to work out. But as far as the ordinance goes, they can meet those, the minimum requirements of the ordinance. One other issue, I guess, in the staff report. So, I guess to summarize, we are recommending approval of the amended preliminary subdivision plat with the change in location of the multifamily component with the conditions in the staff report. And I can go through those briefly. And the first one is that all lots, all lots shall have a minimum lot width of fifty-five feet at the building line. The previous plan had fifty feet at the building line. In this plan, they showed that they were going to try and build at fifty-five-foot lot widths. So, I added that condition on there so it would, we'd make sure that was maintained. They've asked me to amend that to give them some flexibility on cul-de-sac lots and corner lots where they might need some additional width. They might be able to get close to fifty-five, but not quite meet fifty-five. So, they've asked for a reduction to fifty feet. I would prefer to see fifty-five. But if you felt that in order to get some of those cul-de-sacs lots in there, fifty feet was appropriate, I would just ask that you cap the maximum number of lots at four seventy-seven, which is what they've shown in the plan. So, if you cap it at that number, that would allow them some flexibility on those cul-de-sac lots, but not allow them to use that minimum width to get additional lots in other areas.
Joe, could we make that, we make that all lots fifty-five feet with the exception of cul-de-sac lots that would be allowed fifty?
You could, yeah. It might just be easier just to cap it at what they're showing though. So, but yes, you could do that. Two, that the applicant demonstrate they can comply with the city of Georgetown ordinance on maintaining a common scheme of development. The townhome area requires a preliminary development plan prior to development. And we always require a, either commercial, industrial, multifamily development that's going to be developed by one owner and owned by one person, not sold off as individual lots. We require a preliminary development plan on those areas so that we can look at stormwater design, access and circulation, driveways, parking, landscaping, things like that. Because we're asking for the landscape buffer along Herndon, I'm recommending that we require them to come back through with more detailed preliminary development plan on that area. They'll have to meet, number four, they'll have to meet our canopy standards for the development. And they can show that as part of construction plan and final subdivision plat. They'll have to meet our, number five, meet our stormwater management plan requirements and our stormwater requirements in our sub-rakes. Number six, any wetland impacts be mitigated and permitted through required permitting agencies. Number seven, I mentioned earlier, no lots shall directly access Herndon Boulevard. Number eight is a carry-through from previous approvals that no more than a hundred and fifty lots allowed to be, no more than a hundred and fifty lots can be platted until they make that connection to Pleasant Valley. And the remainder are standard subdivision requirements that they meet all our zoning subdivision rates and that we get a copy of a digital plan prior to recording. recording.
Joe, did you mention the variance, was the cul-de-sac length, that would not be?
No, I didn't. They did add, they did require two, based on the layout of the amended plan, they did require two variances to our sub-rakes. One is to the maximum cul-de-sac length on one of the streets, which we have a maximum length of sixty feet, or six hun- six hundred feet, sorry. And this one will have to be shortened to meet that requirement. And then they didn't show the required number of parking spaces in the townhome area. There, it requires three twenty-three, they showed three thirteen. So they, they would need those, both variant, both those variances, but we're recommending denial on those variances, just because they haven't shown justification.
Just to let you know, there's only one variance listed on the report.
Yeah, the parking came up after, after the staff report was complete, but they, we are recommending that they come back for preliminary development plan on that area, so we can address the parking at that time, too. So those are the only two, but we're recommending denial on those variances.
Thanks, Joe. Any questions for Joe? Charlie, do you need to swear everybody in?
Yes, sir.
Could everyone sign in to speak before we get started here? Stand and raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the statement you're to make tonight are the truth to the best of your information and belief?
I do.
Thank you all.
Sir, if I did sign in, I would...
Oh, you just took the oath, you can sign in when you get up there. Thank you.
Sure, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I don't have time to cover it up. What street are they planning on accessing for Pleasant Valley?
No, we'll probably get to that, let the applicant speak, and then we'll let everybody who wants to speak, speak. It's this way, just questions and answers. Thanks, Charlie.
Can you do this again?
Another gentleman behind you is going to speak, the applicant first, and then we'll get some questions.
Good evening. Nick Nicholson here on behalf of the applicant Ball Homes. We are in basically complete agreement with the staff on their conditions, with the kind of one exception that Joe indicated. We're fine withdrawing kind of the variance requests, or if you all would like to disapprove them, however procedurally, we're happy to do that. Specifically, before I kind of address the plan in general, you know, Joe's request, or the, the first condition with regards to the length of the fifty-five, we're happy with basically either making it an average of fifty-five, make a minimum of fifty and cap it at four seventy-seven. However, the Planning Commission so wants to do that, it just, it causes great issues as kind of Joe indicated, is on those cul-de-sac little lots where you're kind of at pie up front, but it's much bigger in the back, trying to make those fifty-five doesn't work with how the circumference of the cul-de-sacs go. And so if we can do either an average of fifty-five, if we could do a minimum of fifty and cap at forty-seven, either one, we're, we're kind of, we're happy to do whatever the Planning Commission's discretion is on that. Since there is so, so many neighbors in attendance, I do very briefly want to kind of go over the, the highlights, so to speak, of how we got here and why we're bringing a plan forward. As you all are aware, and as Mr. Kane indicated, Ball Homes did not originally bring forth the development plans for this project. However, they did acquire what's being called as Phase One, and they are the ones who built those homes. The homes that are being proposed on this development plan are of the exact same quality, the same style, the same type that they are building right now and have already completed some of those. It is a natural progression and continuation of the exact same type of single-family residential. What is changing here is a slash in the number of multifamily units and also the intensity of the type of multifamily units. We are going from two hundred and forty-nine apartments in multi-story apartment buildings, and we're kind of decreasing that into a hundred and twenty-nine townhomes. It is also basically making this more of a single-family development as opposed to a kind of multifamily throughout the middle of the development itself. The reason why we are doing this is, again, this wasn't our first, this wasn't our plan originally. We kind of inherited this development plan. After looking at this plan, looking at the property, we felt that this was, quite frankly, just, it was a better plan. We would be within our rights to pull permits on everything that's already proved right now. We would prefer not to go that route because we do think that this reduction in density is going to be much better for the existing neighbors, the surrounding neighborhoods, and kind of the area in general as a whole. With that being said, we would request approval. Again, we are in agreement with Mr. Kane's conditions, with the exception of condition one, as earlier said. I'm happy to take any type of questions that you all may have. If you want me to get into the covenants, I'm happy to do so. We've already submitted basically covenants to Joe that are under review and would be evaluated before the final plats are issued, that meet all of the conditions that kind of Mr. Kane laid out that Mr. Hartley had brought up. But I'm happy to answer any specifics if you all have questions. I'm at your pleasure.
Any questions by the commissioners?
Well, just one, you know, in the, the debate over the bill line on the cul-de-sacs, would you also be okay with a specific number?
With the max of four seventy-seven?
Do you need a single-family home?
No, 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 I'm talking about just on the, we were talking about possibly, Joe brought it up, possibly specifying a number, a specific number of lots that we would be willing to go less than fifty-five. You were talking about an average and, you know...
I, I believe Joe indicated that it was basically having a cap on the entire development.
Yeah. You want to put a cap on the, on the single-family home?
Yeah.
Development shows four hundred and seventy-seven units total.
And that's single-family and multifamily.
Then I missed, I thought we were talking about the cul-de-sac situation.
We're, we're happy to put a cap on it.
No, that's not what I, I was...
Okay.
But we could, you could do that, with the cul-de-sacs.
The fifty-foot building line would only refer to the single-family homes, would it?
Yes.
So cap it at two eighty-five for, two hundred and eighty-five single-family homes?
I think it's three hundred and, or no, three hundred and forty-eight, single-family?
It's two eighty-five new.
Yeah, it's the total of three hundred and forty-eight. We figured just cap the entire development, so there would be no concern that we're going to try to come in and shoehorn in more multifamily.
Right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
So what we do now is open it up to the public to speak?
Yes, sir.
You'd come up one at a time and state your name? Anybody wants to speak against or for?
We've signed it.
So you can come up if you would like to speak.
And as you come up, please state your name, so I can make sure you're on the list.
I will. My name is Larry Roach. I live at two oh one Rhodes Lane. Being a former city manager of three cities in the Midwest, director of public works and so forth, I feel I have some credibility in these issues. The one thing I'll start out by saying is this, you know, we bought these properties, and I'm sure that others here will agree with me, with the understanding that we had a plan to live beside. And that being the multifamily being away from and in, you know, in the back of this development. And now they want to change it and put it right up at the front, which, you know, everybody would surely admit, they'd rather live by a single-family house than a multifamily house, because of crime and because of a lot of things. One is, I'd like to ask, are they going to rent these units? Anybody got an answer to that?
Yeah.
They are rentals?
Yes. Who will, who will own these units?
You know, Mr. Roach, I think normally what we'll do is ask the questions, and then the applicant will answer all your questions at the end instead of...
That's fine, okay.
Please, Mr. Roach, thank you.
But I would want to know who owns these units.
Okay, and the applicant will answer.
Yeah. And, and going back to crime, it's just one faction that I'm concerned about. Surely, everybody would agree, you get a bunch of rentals and all that, it's going to change it. But there are a lot of other issues. And a good example is street lighting. We've got a development where we live in Phase One, I guess you call it, that has no streetlights right now. We don't have any streetlights. Secondly, I'm concerned about the utilities in this area. I realize this is a preliminary approval we're asking, but I'm concerned that if we were to put in a lift station, forced main sanitary sewer, we might get into crossways with EPA as far as the wetlands, the formal designated wetlands. There's a lot of questions to ask, but one of the bigger things, one that this commission probably has no authority over, is the road, and that is unbelievable. Old Oxford, and some of you have traveled it, Mark, thank you. I went out and measured that thing today, and in the worst dimension, from pothole to pothole, sixteen feet. I measured my SUV, and it was seven foot, from tip of mirror to tip of mirror, and I measured a concrete mixer truck, and it was eight foot six. Now, let's think about that. I know you guys are not going to approve or disapprove of the roadway, but you have the stick here, so as to speak. You can stop this thing until the city widens that road or something. You really can. It's terrible. We got dead trees all along there. Everybody knows what happened last year to Jessica and, and her family. I mean, it's terrible. And, you know, no paint striping, you go there at night, you can't see anything on that street. Yes, there is some paint, but it's so faint, it's impossible. So do they tie together? Yes. If you, if you dump a hundred and twenty-seven homes initially, I understand that's what's going to happen, and we know those townhomes will go quick. They'll go quick. Just think about two hundred and fifty more cars on Old Oxford every day. Concerned about the valuation of our properties. Properties, I mean, you know, rental units right across the street from us is not going to increase the value of our properties. Now, let's think about that. You know it won't. It really won't. It will not increase it, it will devalue it. Again, I mentioned lighting and, and crime. So to sum it up, obviously, you can tell I am very opposed to this change. I bought that house thinking the townhomes are going to be away from the main roads. Would that solve some of my concerns? No. But they were approved when I bought the property. They were approved there. And there's just an awful lot of questions to ask about the infrastructure of this particular development. And I think that pretty much sums up my case, but I, I want to reiterate, you may, I, I tried to go to counsel with getting a few of these little minor things done, and I got no, no reaction at all. One dead tree is down. But I'm telling you, somebody's going to get killed out there, and I, I wouldn't think anybody would want that on their conscience. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Anybody else want to speak against or in favor of?
I just signed in a few minutes ago.
Please state your name.
Daniel Wells, I live at seven twenty-five Old Oxford Road, which is immediately adjacent to this massive subdivision. I'm sandwiched in between this place and Cherry Blossom. I thought I was in accounting, but I'm no longer in accounting. Technically, I am, but I'm not. All I see is the backs of houses from my property. I spent a lot of money for my property to get away from housing, and it's right next door to me within a hundred feet. I'm not happy about that, but there's nothing I can do about that. This subdivision is a massive overkill of rural land. You know, we moved Georgetown and Scott County is rural community mostly. Fifty-five foot lots are ridiculous. They have massive amounts of farmland, hundreds and hundreds of acres out there. Why fifty-five foot lots? They should be at least a minimum of seventy foot lots. I used to be a builder, I've done some minor development. There's no excuse for cramming houses in that closely together. There really is no reason for it. And this gentleman just spoke of the traffic. Four, six times a day, I go up and down Old Oxford Road. There was two police out there today shooting traffic radar, which is good, slowing down traffic. But nevertheless, from seven o'clock in the morning, seven thirty, till five o'clock, lumber trucks, rock trucks, lumber truck, I'm sorry, concrete trucks constantly run that road. They, most of these guys are pretty good drivers, but you still have to drop your right-hand side of your vehicle off the road to get them by you. The rides, the right-hand road, both directions, is torn to hell because, and the county's doing the best they can. The county has the responsibility of patching roads, and they're out there during the summertime, probably once a month, patching six, eight, ten inch strips of land of roadway. It's not, it's, it's a temporary fix, no matter what, how well they do it. Their, the roads are atrocious. That's a county road, it's been there for probably a hundred years or more, and it is not the place for any future development until the road issue is addressed. You're getting, they are getting a cart before the horse badly, because you need some roads out there before you even think about doing development work. Whether you come in from the other side of town, the west side, or come up Old Oxford Road, you still got the same problem. You've got a two-lane road. Dumping traffic even on the other side of the subdivision, goes on a two-lane road, you've got two choices, you go back to connect the road and try to get out there, and everybody knows how bad it is at four o'clock, five o'clock, six o'clock, with the Toyota traffic, all the traffic government, from Lexington. You go out on the freeway, or not, I'm sorry, the bypass, if you're going to turn left, you've got a problem, because you've got nothing but Toyota traffic coming at you from the north side. It's a horrible situation. And for you all to even think about doing a development or proving anything, no matter what has been done in two thousand and eight, I think there's some sort of a time lapse in there that you all need to address. But this is ridiculous, and that's where I stand. The traffic overkill on density and ruining rural properties, that could be a nice place out there because of the density zoning. So that's really all I can say.
Next.
I didn't sign in, but...
Want to come in and state your name and thoroughly add it to the list?
Do you need to sign this?
No, I'll write your name down.
Melissa Kramer, K-R-A-M-E-R.
Did you swear in?
I did.
And do you swear or affirm what you're about to say is the truth to the best of your information and belief?
I do, thank you.
Say your name again, please.
Melissa Kramer. I live at two fourteen Rhodes Lane, and I just would like to say that in lieu of the new information that these will be rental properties, hearing that they were going to change the multifamily and obviously move it to the front of the subdivision, that was not exciting to us. We all bought properties, most of them between two and three hundred thousand dollars. We've made a large investments, our families have made sacrifices. We moved to a nice area that had green space around us. Our children play with each other in the middle of the street, they, it's quiet out there at night. We feel safe. A lot of us have moved from Fayette County and bought property in Scott County because that's the draw of Scott County for a lot of us, is that we're able to do that with our families. And to find out that not only are they going to build multifamily right in the front of the subdivision, which affects our property value, but to have them be rental properties, that greatly affects our property value. And we all, I think, feel a little misled. I understand that it was not Ball Homes that had originally done that development, but it looks like in the, I think in the original plan, the gentleman had said that there were a couple of pocket parks, there was a clubhouse, the multifamily was down the road and not right in the front of the subdivision when you pull in. What Mr. Roach has said about the traffic, I mean, I have three small children in a minivan that we're driving down, and those construction vehicles going in and out, I've been run off the road before. There is no, I mean, it's all chewed up on the side, there's no side of the road to go to anyway. I do believe it's very dangerous, and at some point, I mean, really... I do believe it's very dangerous, and at some point, I mean, really, the road issue, I think, is a big one before all of this is built. I'm not quite sure what the plan is to widen that or to fix it, but I think that that would need to be done beforehand. But I just wanted to voice concern as a family, and we have a lot of families that are here that we made an investment, and a lot of us moved to Scott County because we really like it here and would like to stay, but that, I think, for a lot of us would change whether we wanted to stay in this area or not, because really, we don't want to live right next door to a hundred and twenty-nine rental properties. That would be literally right across the street from us with a buffer of some shrubs is probably not really helpful. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak?
I'd like to.
Sure, please.
I didn't sign in, I'm sorry.
We'll get your name and Charlie will swear.
Do you swear affirm what you're about to say to be the truth, best your information and belief?
I do.
And your name, please.
Christine with a K, Murphy. I just wanted to ask and comment. I live in Pleasant Valley, one sixty-nine Stephen Drive. Pleasant Valley does not have roads that are wide enough to accommodate traffic coming through, especially Toyota School, Walmart, anybody living over there having access to come through. The streets cannot handle, we could barely get one car through when everybody's home for the more cars constantly going through to Toyota, Walmart, you know, just getting to the main roads, because it would obviously be a shortcut. And also, what roads are they planning on joining to Pleasant Valley? Because it's never really been indicated what roads there are. There's a couple dead-end roads in Pleasant Valley that lead up to the farm, but there's no indication which roads they're indicating.
We'll have the applicant answer that for you.
That's all I wanted to say.
Next, come on up.
I didn't sign in as well.
We'll get you to state your name.
We've got to get better at this, you know?
Chris Mosley.
Do you swear affirm the information you're about to give to be the truth, best your information and belief?
I do.
And what, Mosley, again?
M-O-S-L-E-Y.
No, no, no.
Chris, Chris Mosley.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
First a statement, and then I've got a question for the developers. I know that you, the council can't do anything about this, most likely, but my family and I would love to see more homes in Scott County with a larger lot. They're very hard to find at this point in time. So, when we start talking about stepping down to fifty yards, fifty feet for frontage, I think that's ridiculous. So, if we could do anything to get larger lots, that's what I would ask for. The second question, or the first question that I actually have for the developers is I heard someone mention that we thought that this was a better plan for the new neighborhood as well as the existing. What criteria did you use to come to that, to tell us that you think that this is a better plan? That's what I'd like to have an answer to. I want to know why you guys think it is, because, you know, a lot of people in this room are probably thinking, yeah, they're after the almighty dollar, but I would really like to hear why.
So, we'll have an answer to. Thank you.
What street do you live on, sir?
Molly.
Thank you.
Anybody?
Can I make one more?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Roach. Come near microphone, please.
The other point that I want to make is, you know, I realize that the ordinance must require developers to widen the street in front of their construction zone, but honestly, in all due respect, it has no effect whatsoever to the problems that we're worried about. And you can, a good proof of that is the widening effort in front of where we live now in Phase One, I guess it's called, and it really has no effect at all. So, if they widen the one in front of the multi-townhomes, or homes, it won't be a bit of help to the concerns we have toward Georgetown. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Ma'am?
I haven't signed in.
No, of course not. Do you swear affirm the statements you're about to give to be the truth, best your information and belief?
I do.
And your name, please.
Joni Molllett.
Joni?
M-O-L-L-E-T-T-E.
You might spell that last one.
M-O-L-L-E-T-T-E.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring up the point, as everyone was talking about it, have we thought about the numbers in the elementary schools? That we'll be able to support, whether they'll be able to support this or not?
It seems as though we have so many trailers on campus right now at Eastern Elementary. From what I've heard, they don't have any plans to start a new elementary school, and they are trying to add teachers wherever they can fit them.
If we brought in that new, what would we be able to support that versus less with bigger lots?
Think I can answer. I mean, just as a commission, we're not the school board, so we can't answer new schools, how many, so forth. I know just in the six years I've lived here, they've redistricted many, many families and kids and homes, so that would be a question for the school board, not us. But as you all know in this room, and all of us up here know, we're the fastest-growing county in the state of Kentucky, and we're just going to continue to grow. I don't remember exactly when we're hitting a hundred thousand, but they're talking about in the next twenty years, which would be an amazing rate of growth. And I'm sure you all have seen that in newspapers and the evening. So, this is a place that if you don't like growth, it's not a place to be living.
I'm good with growth. It's just the elementary school situation. All the other points that they've brought up, we're good.
And I've got two kids in the schools myself, so I understand the overcrowding.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? De'Ernest Thomas, I did sign in.
Thank you very much.
Two fifteen Rhodes Lane, and mostly with my neighbors. I don't have any kids or anything like that. I'm just here to support my neighbors. We moved out here just for the fact there were bigger lots versus Lexington. Enjoy it. We can't stop growth. We understand that. But when you're trying to develop something, do you, are you going to have like some people from the neighborhood, the community, or whatever, to try to sit on the plans and try to see if we can make it a little better for everyone? Because you're not going to stop it. So, I just won't let you just see, can we get somebody from the neighborhood to try to ease things and make things a little better?
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak, please, sir?
My name's Greg McMakin. I live at two ten Rhodes Lane. You know how to spell the last? M-C-M. And I didn't sign up. That's what I was waiting for.
Do you swear affirm the statement you're about to give to be the truth, best your information and belief?
Yes, sir.
Now, your name again? Greg McMahon?
McMakin. M-C-M, A-K-I-N.
Thank you.
Like my neighbors and stuff, we all bought these properties, and we've all spent, I think the lowest home in the neighborhood is two hundred and thirty thousand to the most expensive one is four hundred and ninety-two thousand. Well, when you put in a hundred and twenty rental properties, you're going to drop value at least eighty thousand dollars in your property. It's given, it's in record, it's written. All engineers, realtors all say it. The only thing that brings up property, the value, is like a Starbucks, Target, any kind of commercial property like that. We all know rental property too has a five-year value drop in it. After the two-year ascendance to get the renters in to rent the properties, they call it renting it by door. So, they're averaging, looking at probably twelve hundred, maybe eight hundred per door. That's per rental unit. Well, after two years, the ascendance drop out, the value of the property drops, then the value of the rent goes down, then you have lower-valued renters come in, plus crime. And let's speak another thing. You're asking a hundred and twenty homes? Well, that's four hundred and something cars, given an average, two cars per rental property, three on some people, because some people might have a teenager living at home. So, on top of the sixty homes that you already have that have two cars, you're talking anywhere seven hundred cars on a two-lane road, not even sixteen foot wide, give and take any part of the day. And I also did a little count, too. I counted thirty-five dead trees closer than ten foot to the road. Anything could drop them. Ice storm, windstorm, tornado, strong winds. Well, we had a neighbor last year, a branch, she's lucky to be here, because it totaled her car, fell off the tree, and crushed her whole car, I mean, took the engine block and put it into the street. That's how bad it hit this car. And her kids were in the car with her, and she wasn't speeding, talking about the construction. They'll run you off the road. There's nowhere to go. You don't, you, some places you have a ditch, some places you have an eight-foot-tall embankment. There's nowhere to go. And also, another question, too, is where are you going to, you know, the way the streets are now, a fire truck can't even get down them to put a house out that's on fire because of the dumpsters, the construction, everything else that goes along with it. The school buses can't even turn around to drop our kids off. You know, and I know you're on at the school commission, but you all approve this. Well, Eastern already has a thirty-five kid per, supposed to be twenty-two kid per room classroom right now. In other words, they're ten to twelve kids, students, overpopulated. Well, what's the average kids that are going to be in these a hundred and twenty rental homes? Would it be fifty, sixty percent? Well, you're taking maybe two, two kids, average to four kids per home for this style home. You're talking sixty kids to a school system. That ain't even, I mean, then you got the elementary. Are you going to build a high school? I mean, are we going to widen the roads? I mean, you can't, that's all I got to say, you know? Thank you for the time. I wish you signed up.
Anybody else here to speak for or against? Anybody?
I would like to.
Please, come on up.
I didn't, no, I didn't. Do you swear affirm the statement you're to give tonight, right hand, please? Are the truth, best your information and belief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak.
Your name, please.
Michelle.
That's me.
M-E-C-H-E-L-L-E Howard.
Howard, thank you.
I wasn't planning to speak at all, but I wanted to be here just for support, but I'm sitting over there feeling convicted to bring this up, because we've mentioned this and possible this. I work with a girl each and every day that's son died on that road, which may or may not mean anything to some people, but she suffers and is actually taking off the next two days because it's the anniversary. I feel like I need to speak in her behalf as well, due to that situation, she suffers daily, and it's in the deep curve that we all know where it is on that road. And if you're not in the right place, you're goner, and I think that's just the case in this. Last year, in October, I was traveling that road, and I was hit myself, and it totaled my van. Fellow was texting and driving. I don't think that really is the same as the concrete trucks and all that coming through, but it was, whether he was or whether he wasn't, it was, there was nowhere for me to go to get out of the way of this fella. So, I just felt led to bring that up, because it is a dangerous road, not to mention all the other things that they have brought up already. I agree with those as well, but I just felt led to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, please.
For the developer? Do you have a question?
We'll add to the list of questions for him to answer.
Thank you. I think in the original plan, he had said something about a couple of parks and a clubhouse, and if those are not in this new revised plan, why are those being taken out? And can there be discussion about that?
Thank you. Anybody else? Otherwise, we'll have the applicant. Yes, ma'am.
I didn't sign in, I'm sorry.
Come on up, we'll swear you in and state your name.
My name is Jennifer Neal.
Jennifer Neal?
Yes.
Do you swear affirm the statement you're about to give to be the truth, best your information and belief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to be, to voice my opinion, because I am opposed to it being, I'm not opposed to the expansion, but I am opposed to it being done before the road gets fixed, because everything that's been said here is correct. And it, I've not been there, I've only been there since June, but I've had a lot of close calls as well, and teenagers that's driving that road, and it scares me to death. And it is just a matter of time that there's going to be another tragic event I'm afraid of. And also, I'm just opposed to the rental properties, because like they've all said, we all paid a lot of money for our properties. It's a beautiful neighborhood. We thought we're going out into the country. It's quiet and peaceful, and then we got that coming in, so that's not, it was kind of like, they had spoke earlier, kind of felt like it was being misled. We knew that they were going to expand, but there was not, at least to us, mention that there was future development for a multi-complex, so that's my concerns, and I just wanted to address that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
What street do you live on, please?
Molly Way.
Okay, I've lived two or three. Ms. Howard?
Molly Way.
And Ms. Mallette?
Molly Way.
Goodness, okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Yes, please.
I didn't sign in.
Charlie will swear you in.
I'm shocked.
Hi.
Do you swear affirm the statement you're about to give to be the truth, best your information and belief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Amy Wright, and I live at two twenty-seven Rhodes Lane, and I've been in the property since August of fourteen. And the thing that I want to know from the developer, first of all, I'm opposed to the townhomes and the rentals, because that was never part of any understanding that I had. Not opposed to expansion, just don't want the rental property where it wasn't ever supposed to be. And secondly, I live, I live, my house backs up to what I call Mount Concrete. It's where the developer is backing up and dumping all of the concrete, all of the trash, all of the dirt, and all of that stuff, so that I used to could be, look out and see like this really pretty, you know, nice barn and some of the wetlands, but that's gone away. So, like, there's three houses, you know, in this area that now look back on this concrete mountain, so I'd like to know how that's going to be fixed. And the people that buy the lot that backs onto that, that's going to settle down significantly because it was, I mean, I could see out, and now I can't. So, I want to know how they're going to deal with the settlement issues and the drainage issues from all that stuff that they've piled up along, you know, behind where my house currently sits.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Might as well make it men's.
Do you swear affirm the statement you're about to give to be the truth, best your information and belief?
I do. My name is John Joyner. I live at two twelve Rhodes Lane. My only question here, I was a contractor in the eighties in Lexington, electrical contractor, wired many townhomes. I just wanted to stress my confusion here. Townhomes, when I was wiring them back in the eighties, was not a piece of rental property. That was my confusion when we started talking about this in the beginning. Townhomes were units that were built, of course, the ones I was, were out there by Lexington Tennis Court. They were very massive, and they were, back in the eighties, they were half a million dollars, but I'm just saying, they weren't rental property. So, why are we using the term townhomes? Or am I confused? Has that been changed in the last hundred years? You see my problem. And I heard mentioned, Joe mentioned something about an HOA, which would be part of this development, and I'm a little concerned about that, what are the ins and outs of that. And I also agree with the gentleman here that lives in the farm, the lady just spoke, the road needs to be fixed before anything else happens.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Have the applicant answer the question? I also have questions for probably Joe and Brian.
I wrote down what I think is all of them, and I'll try to run through them real quick. As far as who is going to be owning and maintaining the townhome areas, it is basically an affiliate of Ball Homes. They own and manage all of the townhomes that Ball Homes owns, and yes, the townhomes are rentals. They, all of Ball Homes townhomes that they build are rentals. The apartments on the previous plan were also rentals. The clubhouse that is shown on the previous plan was just for the apartment rental guests. It was not for everyone in the neighborhood. With regards to parks, we are showing the exact same open space that is on the previous plan. We are also agreeing to put in the multi-use trail that was on the previous plan. The only thing that is different is the removal of the clubhouse, which again was only for the apartment uses, and so once the apartments were going away, there was no reason to have that clubhouse there. With regards to which roads in Pleasant Valley, it's my understanding it's Wesley Avenue and Schneider Boulevard. Avenue and Schneider Boulevard, um, Joe can correct me if that is wrong, but I believe those are the two that we are showing right there, they are the exact same roads that the previous plan showed the connection to.
Schneider goes straight, I'm sorry.
Yeah, straight down, right there.
Yeah, on Schneider goes.
The two, is it not Schneider?
Well, I mean, I think it will be eventually, but I don't think that section is, they'll get on the right, Schneider, that connection is not.
Okay, that, okay, thank you, I'm sorry for the wrong.
No worries, no worries. Um, uh, uh, with regards to the roads, uh, we are showing improvements, uh, out in front of, uh, the, the townhome area. This is, you know, as, as Joe indicated, can be required, we are doing that. Um, we cannot be required to do road improvements throughout the entire, uh, development, that is unfortunately Kentucky law, uh, excuse me, cannot be shown off the development property. Uh, that is Kentucky law, it just is how it is, and I do want to remind everyone with regards to the roads, if this plan is not approved today, a much more dense plan is already in effect, and that is even more effective. Uh, the streetlights issue that was addressed, we bonded the streetlights, it is up to the city to actually put them in, um, it's on the plat, it shows that it, that we did in fact bond it, and we will have to do the same for this plat as well to ensure that all of these city utilities are put in place, but it is my understanding, we do not do that, that is a Georgetown, uh, kind of obligation, we just put up the money, which we have done. Uh, as far as the design of the plan, what we have done is tried to make a much better layout for the kind of townhome area. The apartments were basically, they were, in the old plan, they went across kind of the entire area where these cul-de-sacs are, all the way to where the wetlands are shown. It was a very long, straight shot of rental apartments and multi-story buildings. Um, we did not think the layout worked in any way, shape, or form, it wasn't our plan.
Joe, would you give him the pointer, so we can, so everybody can see where he's pointing to?
Can he stand a little away?
It's the microphone, I'm sorry.
It's the microphone.
It's, it's being taped, that's the problem, so I'm talking to that. Um, so here is the multifamily area right there, um, it is basically a bulk of, uh, apartment units that you have access right here, and it's just one long strip. Um, this type of layout is not used anymore, it is a remnant of kind of the late eighties, early nineties type model for apartment complexes that tried to expand them. Uh, a kind of cluster of multifamily is a much better use, or much better design. And at the end of the day, what makes this a better plan is we are slashing by over a hundred units off the multifamily, we're cutting multifamily in half. It was at two forty, I think now it's at one twenty, one twenty-eight?
One twenty-nine.
One twenty-nine. Uh, it went from a density of four point four down to three point six, three point eight six, excuse me. Uh, it is more single family, uh, it is more houses that are the exact same in far as quality and price as what was currently built. Uh, it, it is, it's the same developer, it's the same.
You're saying that apartment's gonna be worth four hundred thousand dollars?
No, I'm sorry, all the single family that's being built.
That's what I'm saying.
All of the single family.
You're saying it's, it's topping what's being built in there now.
Let him answer all, sir, can we let him answer all the questions, and if you wanna come back up, we'll have you up, I promise.
All of the single family that is being proposed here is the exact same single family that was already built, it was built by Ball, these new ones are being built by Ball, it is the exact same type, quality, and building materials. Uh, this is now a plan that shows more of a shift to single family. It was one-to-one ratio, multifamily, single family, we're now at a three-to-one ratio when it comes to single family to multifamily. It went from multi-story apartment buildings to townhomes. This seems to me like it is a no-brainer of a much better plan. Um, I do understand the consternation of the neighbors with the shift upwards, um, but we think that this is a much better layout, and unfortunately, with a plan that is currently approved, we can basically pull permits from, we just wanna make a better plan instead of being stuck with one that we don't think is ideal. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, could, uh, Concrete Mountain.
Uh, that is, as soon as we can start building back there, I know that that'll disappear, there is, I've, I've not actually laid eyes on it, so I can't say specifically, but all of that area has to be graded, and new houses would have to go in there.
And as far as, uh, let's say, compliance with HOA?
Mm-hmm.
You have no problems with that?
Not at all.
Joe can answer more.
Yeah, we've already turned in, uh, the kind of proposed covenants for the entire thing, it addresses every single, uh, covenant that's already in there, phase one covenants, um, and it, it's, it's, it covers everything they had with the exact same restrictions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, I've got a couple of questions, or, and, does the commission have any questions for the applicant? I'm sorry, before I let him off the hook. Joe, would you, I've got a couple of questions. I know a couple of the residents had addressed the streetlights, and, and the applicant has, has answered the question, there's sixty-three homes currently there, when does the city tend to get the streetlights in?
Brent may be better at answering this, but yeah, they do bond, the developer does have to bond the streetlights, and the, and the city determines when they go in, when a certain percentage of homes.
I thought the utility determines when they go in.
The city ordinance. Brent, you wanna go up to the microphone?
It's the city's ordinance, but the city ordinance is eighty percent of the lots have to be built on before they will install the streets. I mean, that's, sorry, the streetlights.
So eighty percent of the whole project, which is four hundred and seventy-seven homes?
No, I'm not sure, no, I'm not sure if that works, I'm not sure if it's per street or per phase, typically Kyle does it per.
Most of these people are here from either phase one.
Yes, I think, if you just looked at phase one by itself, if eighty percent of the lots have houses on them, they could ask the city.
We can ask the applicant here in a second, 'cause I'm pretty sure they've got.
But the request usually come, yeah, my experience is the request comes from the residents directly to the city engineer for that.
And another question, um, Joe or Brent, do you have a comment, I know, uh, with the widening of Old Oxford, and not just in front of the applicant's, uh, application, but as far as the distance of, have either of you talked to either Kyle or somebody from the city about widening the road and, and dangers of the road, it sounds like we've had a deaf in another accent, but, Brent, would you wanna address that?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've talked to Mul, I've talked to everybody about it, about the condition of, um, Old Oxford and how to get it widened. Um, it's gonna have to take a concerted effort of everybody and, um, to find a funding source to make up the difference between the amount that the developers are obligated to, um, to spend to widen their frontage, I mean, that's not gonna pay for, I mean, the Northeast Georgetown Traffic Study identified the need and had a, um, estimate of five million dollars for widening of Old Oxford. So, it's a matter of getting that in the, um, plan for Scott County, um, in the, in the state transportation plan, and getting, um, getting fund, funding to pay for it, I mean, that's the sticking point.
Any other questions?
Is Old Oxford, uh, I know we've talked, we talked about this a year ago, or longer ago, um, is it, is it county or state, or is it a combination?
It's, it was a county road, but now it's a combination of city-county, so it's city within the city limits, so they annex the road when they annex that area.
What is Kyle's last name, city?
Goodwin.
Goodwin, I know I spoke to Kyle Goodwin, Mr. Roach and I had spoke a few days ago, and Kyle called me and said, currently, they have about eight hundred thousand dollars for road improvement, uh, they have over five million dollars of need in the city alone, they, and, and you may, I don't know the exact terminology he used, there is a machine that they, they scan the roads and takes the politics out of what roads need it worse, and I was able to take a ride of Mr. Roach, and that's gotta be one of the worst roads in, in this area by far, I would, I would think, so. Kyle didn't give me an indication of what roads were gonna be improved first, um, but he said they've done the scan, and, and I was unaware this machine even existed, so I don't know if it hooks under a bottom of pickup truck or what.
I think that's probably just for the paving, repaving, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna do the widening.
Not for the widening improvement.
No, well, not for the widening, but the condition of the road, and I'll be honest, Old Oxford's gotta be one of the, uh, most potholes I've seen, and I, I'm impressed with the overall condition of our streets here in Georgetown, Scott County, we've got some nice roads out there, and that's gotta be one that's pretty beat up. So, right, it doesn't take into consideration widening, which is also a need. So, any question, other questions for Joe or Brent from the commission?
If I can clarify, on the streetlights, we've looked at an aerial, it looks like about sixty-six percent of it's done, um, looks like there's about twenty lots that still remain.
So, phase one there?
Yeah, phase one.
It's not an absolute.
It, just saying, it, it looks like it's very close, it is not already there.
Okay.
That's all.
If you'd like to come back up and speak.
So, I think it's only like four lots left.
It's just not an old aerial.
Okay, well, it's four lots left, out of, how many was phase one?
Sixty-three is what I've got, if I did my math right.
Sixty-three, so it's, it's at least fifty-eight homes there.
Okay. Well, we can definitely, Brent, if you would look into that for them, I mean, or Joe, please, they can look at.
I'll take as long as I can, pal.
Okay. Um, Jen, I'll serve there, and, uh, did you wanna speak again? Oh, you're good, okay, just wanna make sure, yes, please, Mr. Roach.
It seems to me that, uh, and I'm assuming that this commission has the authority to approve this amended subdivision plat without city council approval, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I want, and I'm not directing this to him, I'll direct it to you, but I wanna take exception with what the developer representative said, it bothers me quite a bit. He basically is saying, if you don't approve this tonight, we're gonna do it anyway. And we're gonna put these multifamily, more of them back in there, and basically saying we have the approval for, for the green flag. Without any other approvals, we don't need anything else, we can just go ahead and bother. I wanna make sure that everybody here understands that they don't have the right to go ahead and do that tonight, that can be stopped in about forty different directions. So let me make sure everybody understands that. Uh, they can apply for permits, they can do this, they can do that, but the problem I have with that is, they don't have a decent plan in terms of the things that we have talked about tonight. They really don't. And until the city and the developer, or whoever, gets together and fixes some of the problems that exist, I say stop this thing tonight, stop it right here. And then if the developer wants to force it with legal action, whatever, and apply for permits, so be it. But they don't have the right to say, well, we'll have dozers out there in the morning, they don't have that right. And believe me, I know what I'm talking about, they can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let, let's, let's try to clarify that, 'cause that, that's a pretty serious statement.
It is.
A, as I understand it, there is a final subdivision plat approved, construction plans approved?
The old plan, from two thousand.
On the old plan?
Six or eight.
Be, because if they've got all their approvals.
The preliminary, Charles.
Just the preliminary. Just the preliminary.
Well, but that still allows construction, bonding, and, and all that sort of thing, I mean.
Allows them to move forward with construction plans.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm talking about, they gotta submit construction.
Yeah, well, I don't know that he said they'd have dozers out there tomorrow, but what they can do is finish the process based on a plan that's already in place, so it wouldn't be long before they could actually have dozers out there.
Let's hear what he says about it, he, he said, and I heard it pretty clearly, that we just go ahead and do this.
Well, again, I don't know that he said it that way, but he has authority to proceed with construction plans and then get building permits and build streets.
He can go through the process, but that can be stopped at any stage of the process. I mean, if you don't have.
Not really by us, if he's got all his approvals, then that would be the same as condemning property, and we're not, we don't, we're not in the business of condemning property.
What if he comes to the, the permitting agency, whoever that may be, and they don't have a decent sanitary sewer plan? Are you gonna say that he can just go ahead and get the permit?
Well, I'm sure his plat has got his signature on there from Georgetown Water and Sewer Service that says they do.
Well, I don't know that, I mean.
Well, well, but they would have to have that, or they wouldn't have their plats already signed.
Well, I just wanna go on record as taking exception to the way that was presented, that's all. Okay?
We'll have the applicant address.
Mr. Roach, I am sorry, that is not what I was trying to say, it is exactly what Mr. Perkins was indicating, we have an approved plan, we can move forward with the construction process, which is submitting the plans, um, that, that have already been essentially approved.
What can they approve or deny?
If they are not in meeting of the Georgetown Code, which they are. Like, that, that's, I, I was not saying, and I never said, we can have dozers out there tomorrow, it is, we can move forward on the plan that's already approved, which is much more dense, which has more multifamily, which has apartments that are rentals, all of the fears that they have espoused today are amplified by the plan that is already approved. That is the only point.
Which is the previous plan, Mr. Roach, with the apartments in the back?
And all I'm saying is to my, stop it right here, deny the amendment, and give it to the city and give them to fix some things, that's all I'm saying. I'm not against Ball Homes, they can do as well.
Do, does either, um, you know what, the one thing he didn't address was the wetlands and EPA, somebody had brought up, would you wanna touch on that? I mean, that usually, and Charlie can usually touch, we normally won't move forward unless that's an approved, there's an approval, correct?
If, if we're doing any construction in wetlands areas, that has to go through the proper permitting, um, and we, we have to do that, we, we cannot, uh, move forward with any type of action inside the wetlands unless we have proper permits.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Commission?
No, I did, I had a question for, for the applicant. Um, I know you've, you've already made a lot of, uh, revisions here that would reduce the, the density. Yes, sir. But if this was true R one C, we would be looking at seventy, seventy-foot lot widths, not fifty-five foot. I understand. Um, do you, do you feel like that some of the people here do have a legitimate complaint that, that fifty-five feet is, is narrow, or is it possible that these could be slightly wider? I, I, I understand their concerns, the current plan is fifty, um, and so we're showing a typical lot that's even larger than what the current plan shows.
Fifty-five, you said fifty?
Yes, so the minimum in a lot of the lots in the current plan is fifty.
That's what you mentioned.
Yes.
Oh, the eight plan, okay.
We are showing that our typicals are fifty-five, there were just some that could not be fifty-five. Um, and that is why we had asked for the exception on that, we're willing to cap total density, that is almost a hundred units less than what is currently approved. Um, and as such, that, we don't think that the lot width at a cul-de-sac corner is what really is a concern with the neighbors here.
I do have a question for you, and I think it may address and possibly even solve some of the issues, so the road, of course, is city and potentially county from this subdivision back towards Lowe's, the widening and, and improvement of the road, what are your thoughts about maybe moving, 'cause I've heard it from several of the people who are here that are concerned of moving those hopped townhomes back to where the apartments were?
Mm-hmm.
What's your thought on that? Can you do that?
Um, I think that would actually cause issues with your wetlands.
Why, you had, you had three hundred apartments.
Because, so, as I said before, the apartments basically were large strips right here.
Correct.
Um, that is basically an outdated method and causes issues within a park complex. And so if we are moving a box down, um, in order to still have a similar layout with regards to the roads here, and keep this open space here, you don't have the ability to move the townhomes down. Uh, there, there's just, there's not unfortunately enough room unless you did the long elongated strip.
Moving forward, the folks who are buying property, these have an expectation of what they are buying, you're kinda just laying in these things right next to us.
I, I understand the concern there, and again, this was not our original plan.
You know, instead of, Joe, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, we gotta keep this in.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna try to do, instead of hollering out, because this is recorded, um, we, we, if the applicant, if you don't wanna speak, come up to the microphone and we'll get one at a time.
Sure.
Sure, go ahead, ma'am.
I've been sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm the statement you're about to give, be the truth to the best of your information believed?
Yes, I do, sir.
And your name, please.
Jessica Brown.
Jessica Brown.
Uh-huh.
And what street do you live on?
Molly Way.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I just have a question, why can't we just take away the townhomes and make it just single-family houses, and that would take away, they still get their houses, they still get their money, but we still get our property value to be there, that's all.
That's all. Everybody's.
Um, Rory Keighley, uh, just one statement. I've lived in a lot of rentals. I wasn't a criminal. And the statements that, I'm assuming some of you had to have had a rental before you had a house. So the early statements that your children play in the street and everything's wonderful, but these rental townhouses is somehow going to change the quality of their lives or who they play with is very irritating.
Thank you, Rory.
Do you swear a firm statement you're about to give be the truth to best your information believed?
I do.
And your name?
Joel Flum.
Please keep it down.
Joel Flum.
Spell it.
Last name P.F.L.U.M.
Thank you. And your street?
Uh, one oh five Molly Way. So that was all I was gonna say, and, and once again, apologies to interrupt, but for you guys, I'm all about working with Ball, they're trying to do business as well, but moving forward, if they could just take the townhomes and move them back to the initial scheme, um, the people who are buying homes down there, at least they'll have an expectation of what they're buying. We all have families and homes up here, and they're just kind of launching these things outside of what we, I personally thought was just gonna be a continuation of our existing great neighborhood that we have. So that's my only issue, and I'm, I wouldn't be completely opposed to them sitting back there, I know it's already approved, but at least they're not launched, like, uh, somebody used the verbiage, um, right across the street with a buffer of shrubs. So, and that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, please, sir.
Do you swear a firm statement you're about to give be the truth to best your information believed?
Yes, sir, I do.
Your name?
My name is Greg Ferguson, two hundred Rhodes Lane.
Greg Ferguson?
Greg Ferguson, yes, sir. Um, when Lois and I moved here a little over twenty years ago, they, uh, built new townhomes and apartments across from Walmart now, and they were nice apartments at the time. But how many of you have been through there lately? That's twenty years. Most of us have thirty-year mortgages on our home. Twenty years from now, if those apartments are in the same situation, look at our homes then, I've rented it, but I've also seen those stuff rentals as well. Good rentals turn into those type of places. So, good heavens.
Thank you. Ma'am?
And thank you for having already been sworn.
Um, I didn't know I was gonna need to talk so much, or I just went silent in the beginning. Um, so, our question too was, why can't they just be single-family, or, um, if they're gonna keep multifamily, I agree, can we move it back down? That was, I, I guess my real question in all of this, the thing that bothers me the most, is most of us have built our homes and bought our homes from Ball, because they've said that they took over the development and they did it, and when we, um, bought from them, we, or right before we were gonna close, we got our list of all the utilities, and on it, they showed Time Warner as our cable, and, um, and all of us at the last minute, like, when we're ready to close on our house, we're calling Time Warner, and they're like, we don't have cable out, we don't even have lines out there. So we were misled and like, I mean, people work from home, and we didn't have cable out there until just a couple of months ago. Um, so, is there, is that gonna be in place for all these people? Will they know that they don't have cable until, or is it gonna be put in? Um, also, when did they change their mind about this plan? Because I don't think that they just came up with this last month. I mean, most of us have built with Ball Home in the last year or two, and I can't imagine that a plan like this wasn't in the works over at Ball Homes long before they presented it here. So we were all kind of buying our home with them having the nice, they had a big sign out there that showed what the, what this original plan was, and then once we all bought our homes, then literally, they are almost done. They have started building on pretty much every lot out there. They may not all be a hundred percent complete, but the building, and the people have bought homes, you could look on L-Bar, sale pending, sale pending, I mean, these are people that are buying lots. They waited until just now to stick a little sign out there to say, oh yeah, there's gonna be a meeting. Well, fortunately, we showed up to find out that they're gonna put a bunch of rental properties across the street, but that had to be in the works when we were buying our homes with that sign out there that showed. So, I would like to know when they developed this plan, like, when they decided they were gonna make this change. Um, and somebody else who's not sworn in yet, had a, um, had a question of, is there a time limit? Because if this preliminary plan was approved in two thousand eight or two thousand and nine, the road conditions and the amount of stuff going back and forth were not the same, like, does that affect, is there some time limit on when they have to actually start doing that or building, or does anything have to be reevaluated before they can do that? Because obviously, the conditions out there are a little bit different. So.
Thank you.
Joe, can you ask a bit?
At the time, in two thousand eight, we didn't have a sunset clause, so the preliminary is good forever. When they come in and, and submit construction plans to actually build it, they have to meet all our current regulations. Um, we did pass a sunset clause two years, a little over two years ago. So if this plan was approved, it would be good for two years. If they didn't build in two years, then they would have to come back and get it re-approved. So we do have that now. So that would apply to the new plan that was approved.
Thank you.
But when can the builder answer?
You have to come up here and speak, ma'am.
Can he answer my questions that I?
Sure, if you come up and, and.
Can you answer when you guys came up with this?
We started in June, and I know you're not gonna believe me, we started in June. We don't own this property. We bought section one, where you all have, um, as a, that was it. That was the only parcel.
Do you currently own all of this?
It is, still the bank owns this. Still the bank owns this property. We do not. It was not our sign. We had your all's property, and that was developed. We started the plan in June.
Charlie, we had something similar. Can we have an applicant in front of us, if they don't own the property, to change the zoning?
Well, what they've got, they've got contracts.
Oh, they're okay, and we're okay.
Yeah, yeah, they, they couldn't do it if they had no interest in the property, but they can, despite not owning it, if they've got contracts, probably contention upon.
It's a purchase agreement contingent on zone change.
Yeah.
Concrete Mountain, I think the, um, I don't live right there, we live farther down the street on the other side, but I don't think that it was a very helpful response that, well, if you guys take care of this now, they'll move the Concrete Mountain. But if the bank owns all that stuff, like, why is Ball dumping there, and if they have all of that that they could be dumping it, why are they doing it right behind where people live? That seems, you said that you're trying to make this nicer for everybody, but that's not very nice for those three houses that have a big mound of all their construction debris piled in their backyard.
Thank you. Do you want to answer that?
I'm, I was unaware of this. We will, like, I'll, I'll bring it up to Mr. Ball as soon as we're out of here, that's for sure.
Thank you. Thought I saw somebody else wanting to come up.
I, I just wanted to say that I can certainly appreciate the plan that's reducing the density. Um, the comment that I would have, the request actually, I would have was, can we work closely together to make sure that we have the road issues taken care of before we start putting the bulk of this in? Um, the second thing is, when I was in the process of buying my home, I know that it was threatening to me a time or two that Ball Homes was gonna have a price increase. So I know you guys are aware.
Are you speaking at a microphone?
I know that you guys are aware of the economy, pricing, things like that. Have you guys done a study that actually tells you what the values are our homes would be after the townhomes go in?
We don't, um, and I, and I don't think the planning.
Real property.
Yeah, the rental property. I, I would actually, I would actually think that Ball Homes would have done that. Seeing as how, you know, all of their customers are in one spot, they wouldn't want to upset them.
All developments that we built have rental properties in them. Um, they maintain their value. We think that we have found a system that really works, and it's being demonstrated on every project that we're doing right now. Um, so the, the values are retained.
I think Stephen.
Would, would any of these townhomes be for sale, or are they all rent?
They're all rentals.
They're all rentals?
It is, basically, it's owned and managed by, um, a Ball Homes affiliate. It's run out of the office.
You don't see it possible to move that to the backside?
It, it, with the layout, it just would not work. And, like, I mean, it, it, unfortunately, just would.
Is there a comparable town area like Lexington?
Oh, you'd have to come up to the microphone, ma'am.
Is there a comparable community in another city that homeowners could say, oh, okay, well, this is where the rentals are, and the prices did not drop? Is there somewhere in Lexington?
I can't answer that, I'm not sure if the applicant.
Blackford subdivision.
Yes, property could also be a.
Is that in Lexington?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sure we're all getting a little tired of this. Uh, Daniel Wells, I've already sworn in. Uh, first thing, I was puzzled by the comments made by the representative. They're taking out all the multifamily housing, two hundred and some units, taking out the common area, uh, I don't know what they call it, a party room or whatever.
Clubhouse.
Clubhouse.
Yeah, clubhouse. And they're moving the townhomes down to where that was, and those are all rental units. Multi-use was rental units also. Why do they take out the, uh, common area and the maintenance, uh, I'm sorry, the party room? And, uh, they still got rental property, two hundred and eighty, two hundred units.
And I could probably answer that, instead of having him keep on, he, like he said, the apartments were down, and it was a long, outdated.
Oh, I understand that.
And then that was, the clubhouse was to, for them only.
Okay, but the townhouses, if they were a hundred percent rental units, why is that so different from multifamily? They should have a.
Thank you, thanks, I hear you. All right, you know what I have?
The point I'm getting at is, I didn't hear that answer, I didn't hear that answer, why they've decided to eliminate the recreation building, and still have, and also, the townhomes, I think, from what I see on these maps, are deeded separately. Each one is a separate deed, as I see here, and that gives them the option, the rental units, or if they decide in the future, for whatever reason, they can start selling them off individually. I don't, I don't know if that's a good or bad thing, but I do know when you're deeded separately, you can sell the property anytime you want.
I'll have the applicant come up and answer both of those questions.
Can we get the picture back up of the whole subdivision? I wanted to just make a brief comment about that. Showing, showing phase one.
The previous subdivision.
Okay, phase one is up in the upper right-hand corner, right?
Correct, yeah.
And that long, snaky drive is the way in and out of that whole subdivision. It dumps, of course, on Old Oxford Road, as everybody knows. As you go, what would be, uh, north from there? See, this is the west side, it'd be north. There's over a mile of, of road there that backs up the Cherry Blossom Golf Course. And I have no idea how the county and the city has evolved to this point in having the responsibility of Cherry Blossom to finish that road off. I don't know, maybe you all don't know either, but the point is, there's over a mile of road frontage that should be Cherry Blossom's responsibility, at least the improvements adjacent to their property. And it has been touched since the day they started Cherry Blossom. You know, I don't know, that's just a comment that I've got. But I sure don't like seeing all that road, two hundred and fifty houses dumped onto Old Oxford Road without any positive plan to do something with Old Oxford Road, three or four lanes is what it needs. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very quickly, it is one parcel for all the townhomes, those are not deeded separately at all. We would not be able to sell those off without coming back and doing a full subdivision plan for every single unit, which is certainly not planned, and Ball Homes does not do that.
And they'd have to be built differently.
Exactly, like, I mean, with, with the fire code, the way that it would be to put a property line in between a joint house.
Extra fire separation and all kinds of stuff.
You just could not do it. Um, it requires a different type of wall in between to have a property line right there. So that is only, only one parcel. Um, a townhome complex like this does not have a clubhouse. Clubhouses are for apartments that have several hundred units, which means a lot more bedrooms, um, and that is just not in the cards there. Um, again, that was not our plan. We would not have shown a clubhouse for this many, uh, multifamily units.
Thank you. Mark, one more question.
Mr. Roach, come on up.
It seems to me, after listening to all the complaints and answers to the complaints and so forth, there's surely enough doubt cast on this particular proposal to warrant a delay at least in approving this particular amendment. It seems also to me like the best plan would be, I don't think anybody here would say they're against growth, and I don't think anybody would say they didn't expect some growth. It's a matter of which it's being done. Now, going back to the original plat where the townhomes are apartments, I'm gonna call them, because they're rentals, I mean, what do you want to call them? They were further down into, away from the entrance, which is our, which is our beautiful spot to entice people to come in there and so forth. I suggest this, that you consider, um, delaying approval on this proposal. And get Ball Homes, and get the city, and the planners, and all that together, and work out a compromise on this thing. As far as traffic, there's no traffic plan here that makes any sense at all. There really isn't. And to dump another bunch of cars on that thing, it's horrible the way it is. So, I'm gonna appeal to you guys tonight, y'all, that delay approval on this, and get these people together, and come up with a bit of a better plan. Maybe back up to the original plan for one thing, but it doesn't really change the concerns a lot of us have on Old Oxford Road. So, ask the developer, ask the city, whoever, to get together, maybe a, a committee or something, and, uh, figure out how this could be more acceptable to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, or commission? Sir, you wanna?
My name is Jay Michelle, and I live on Molly Way.
Have you been?
I've been sworn in.
Oh. Uh, I can't even remember now what I'm supposed to say. Do you swear a firm statement you're about to give be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Your name again, please?
Ja- John Shell.
Shell, and your street?
Molly Way.
Thank you. Have we got everybody here tonight from Molly Way?
I just want to say that I really applaud my neighbors. Everything they've said is just and true, and, uh, I'm proud of them. And, uh, I bought the house two years ago, lived here from Madison, Michigan, and what sold me on it was the neighborhood and the location it's at. And if this project goes through, I'll, I'll seriously think about moving. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Can you ask for clarification?
Absolutely, come on up.
All right, in regards to what he said and you have brought up, if they don't actually have stake in the property already, they don't have a place to be before you. You said there's a contingency on your sales contract, so my curiosity is, if you all don't approve this, does that make the sales contract all a void? And are you still interested in the property if this doesn't go through?
Charlie, want to answer that on the lead line?
Well, I can't answer that, because that's a matter of private contract, and, and we certainly can't make them answer that if they don't.
All I can say is there's a purchase agreement that gives us standing here, um, and we are still interested because there's an approved development plan. Um, I mean, that's as simple as I can put it.
Thank you, Charlie, thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? Uh, just conversation.
On all these, is it just one way in and one way out on Old Oxford Road?
Currently, but I think, uh, after a hundred and, Joe, a hundred and fifty homes.
There'll only be one entrance on Old Oxford, but there'll be other connections, uh, two plus the ballot.
Okay, but there'll only be one forever?
Yes.
Off of there, off of Old Oxford, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions by the commission? Discussion?
Bob wouldn't necessarily be a question, just a comment. It seems like there are two, two major sticking points here. One is the road, and the other is this, these townhomes and the, being adjacent to, to existing homes that never expected to have, uh, townhomes adjacent to them. And I don't know, it looks to me like somehow we need to find, find a way that these could be located somewhere else in this development. I don't know how, how it'd have to be reconfigured, but I don't think anybody's, uh, gonna be happy with these being up there.
Any other conversations, comments?
Yes, I would like to, uh, reiterate that. I agree with Mr. Smith. My two problems with, with this plan as it is shown, i- is the, in my mind also, is the major change from the multifamily homes being further back in the development and now being right up front. And to let you folks know, we've, we've not, of course, it's true politics, I would, I would call it, but it's not that we've not tried to find someone to improve Old Oxford Road. This is not the first time we've had these discussions. Um, back when Cherry Bloss. Back when Cherry Blossom was wanting to change some of their development, we, we've heard the same thing. I don't know how we can possibly, this development, the preliminary, was obviously approved in 2008. Of course, our excuse would be, we, we weren't here then. But, but we understand that we do not, we want to try not to continue to make mistakes. We want to try to improve on our process and how things are done. But we have to look at it from several different ways. We have ordinance, regulations that we have to go by. We feel both for the developer, the current owner of the property, that obviously needs to sell it. But we also have you folks in mind, too. That's our job, and it's a tough one, to try to make the right decisions. And I would be, you know, I would hope that, as Mr. Roach suggested, that there, we could get something together between the developers, the current homeowners, and, and meet middle ground. I can guarantee you, nothing's going to be absolute for either, either or. We all know that. But maybe a better situation than, than what we're looking at tonight. And I don't know that we could, we, we can do that individually, but if we follow our ordinances and our regulations, then really, more than likely, we would have to approve this plan, because it does comply. So, everybody knows that. So, it's going to be more of an individual decision for us this evening, if we do take it to a vote, to approve or disapprove this preliminary plan. The, the major issue, the other major issue, obviously, is our concern, and we've talked about it in workshops and, and other meetings we've had, is how do we, to a certain extent, slow growth and keep our infrastructure up in place where it needs to be? Our problem is, and this isn't a cop-out, it's, we don't have any control over that, yet we're asked to approve these development plans, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It puts us in a bad spot, and we're continually running into it. Not only our streets, we all know about our schools. Of course, I'm sure we all have our personal views on the high school deal. Don't ask me about that one. But anyways, somehow, I think we're going to have to, and with the help of you folks, because we're representing you, we're working for you to try to do the right thing for everybody, and we're working for these folks. But we're going to have to come up with some kind of plan to really seriously, more seriously, look at our infrastructure, and so we're not continually, because we're going to keep growing. There's no doubt about that. We can't stop it. And growth is not all bad. It's, it's, there's a lot of good points to it. But somehow, we're going to have to get with our city officials, our county officials, and our state officials, and we have called, I know, we've had, Joe has had numerous meetings with the state. You know, we hear one year, well, we're on, we're in the five-year plan for this improvement. Connector Road's been a big thorn in our side. And then, well, no, well, it, it didn't get approved in this five years, so it's going to be maybe in the next five. Which is very frustrating for us, because they know how we're growing also. So, I don't know how we're going to do it. We need to, we need to get a committee together. I think a, a large, regular citizen backing would, would help immensely. We should have done it before the elections, but that's all right. We'll work from here forward and see if we can't put together a group and seriously look at our infrastructure demands and, and see if we can't get. I had a plan about how to do this, but it, it, I don't, I guess it won't work in, in our political scheme of things, but to come up with the tax dollars to improve our infrastructure before we get into this situation where we're asked to approve these developments, to put more roads on, more vehicles on roads that can't handle what's on it now. So, I, I just wanted to state all that so you folks understand our dilemma up here also, trying to do the best thing. Doesn't help a lot, but I just wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Any other comments by the commission? I need some type of motion. To approve or deny?
Joe, is it correct that if, if this was turned down, they could use the original plan as a starting point? Or, I mean, it has been approved, not by us, but by previous?
They, they could. I mean, they could use, they could, they could submit construction plans based on the other approval and move forward with it. I mean, I'm, I don't know if they would. I mean, if they don't want to build that multifamily product, I don't know if they'd move forward, but they could.
Could they build part of it and then come by? For this other plan, or would they have to go with that plan all the way?
They would have to go with the plan the whole way, but.
The whole way.
But are there, are there plans phased? Do you know that offhand? Is it, is there two, three, four, and five, or is?
Just one.
The previous plans?
Well, that's up to them. And they can break it down any way they wish.
I didn't know if there were on the previous plans, because we don't, I don't have a copy of that. I can't see that far.
My, my question would be to the applicant, would you be willing to consider, to look at a possibility of reconfiguration, that would put these townhomes in a, in this corner?
We, we honestly have looked at every place we could put them, and the only place else that it could probably go is right behind all of the houses.
Right behind?
And that's not a good solution, because it kills all the connectivity. If you do that, you lose two probably connection roads that, that are in, for the future. And so, while it might solve this particular issue, it probably just actually exacerbates it since it's right in their backyard then, as opposed to across Herndon Boulevard. It's also killed the connection, and it, it kind of stifles the entire flow of the development. I, it's, we've looked at this, we really have.
Do you have suggestions for ways to super buffer this, this, along that street?
We are, we are happy to work with staff and neighbors to figure out some type of buffering, buffer solution that would be adequate.
Would, would any of the neighbors be happy with a wave more buffer than would normally be?
My house is right there, you know.
We're happy to work with.
You need, need to come up to the microphone.
Do they have to be townhomes? Can they be?
Why?
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 Why can't you build a single family?
That's why, I mean, why can't we just do single family? And that would just be.
Ball Homes has been doing this for a while. They know what is successful and what creates good neighborhoods. While they might disagree with that, this is not the first time we've done this type of thing. If it's not townhomes, then it's multi-story apartments. And that, I would think, would infuriate them even more. At the end of the day, we are taking the density by over half for multifamily, taking it off multi-story and turn it into townhomes. It, it just, I understand the consternation with it moving up, but at the end of the day, I think we're solving a lot more problems than creating with this.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, commission?
The road situation, I drive the road twice a day, and my wife drives it twice a day. Goes across there, and it, it is terrible. I've driven it for seventy-one years now. So, I, it's, it's not any better than it was seventy-one years ago, hardly, just more traffic.
Any motion? Comments? Charlie, if we don't get a motion one way or the other, what happens?
Let's hope it doesn't get to that point. Well, I mean, we've, we've got to take action at some point. I mean, it, we're, I mean, we simply have to take action. I guess you could continue it a month, if you think that's.
If you don't take action, doesn't it get tabled?
Well, yeah, but we, I mean, we can't just do that indefinitely. So, if, if there's something that we think we can change, then, you know, perhaps what you need to do is just continue it for a month and work on something. It doesn't sound like the plan, the applicant is amenable to making changes. They, they, they believe this is the best plan. It's problematic to turn it down, because if it complies with everything, then that puts us in a bad spot. On the other hand, there is an approved plan. So, we probably aren't quite so bound to approve it as we ordinarily are, because they already have a, a use of the property. Of course, as we all perhaps agree, the existing plan is in many ways not even as good as this one, although relocating the townhomes might help things a lot. Anyway, but, but it, it's problematic if we take no action. So, as I said, if, if we think we can gain something, then fine, put it next month and see what can be done. It doesn't sound like though that's got a whole lot of utility to it either. I mean, generally speaking, you've got more discretion when it comes to zone changes. But even then, it's based on what the record says. And where they come in and staff says they comply with everything we've got, we really don't have discretion on those things. We have perhaps more here than usual, simply because they've already got a plan, so we could say no, you know, leave it the way it is. But that doesn't sound like that's really going to be acceptable to too many people either.
I'm not, I'm not a designer, but I still can't see why this, why this townhome unit could not be moved straight down below the, down where these cul-de-sacs are. That would solve the problem of the people out front here not having townhomes and rental properties, whatever you want to call them, adjacent, which is, was not what they expected when they, when they bought in there. I assume, did, did a lot of you look at a plan when you bought this, thinking that there would be single-family homes, or?
Yeah, I was thinking.
We had, we had.
There was a huge billboard sign in front of the subdivision when we all were looking at our lots that showed the development plan with all the multifamily down, way down the street, back behind all the wetlands. And that's a very different location for us than across the street.
Right.
We need a motion.
I'd make the motion, we deny this. I can't see how it's going to work.
Motion by Steve Smith?
Based on the.
To decline.
I moved as decline because, mostly because of the townhomes being located adjacent to the existing, existing development of single-family homes.
We have a motion?
And the road. I'd like to see something done about the road. I, I don't know what the answer is on that.
A second. Second, by Byron, Mr. Moran. Okay, I'll go to a roll call. Mr. Moran?
Could I?
Oh, yes, sir.
Could I make a statement before we?
Yes, yeah, yeah, you can make up for discussion.
Thank you. I want to go on record saying that I have a lot of the same feelings as Mr. Smith and Mr. Moran. My only problem with is what I stated earlier. If it complies to our ordinances and regulations, it makes it a little bit of a tricky vote for me. I just want to go on record saying that. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Moran? This would be to decline. So, a yes would be to decline, a no would be to approve, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Moran?
Yes.
So, yes to decline. Mr. Shirley?
No.
Mr. Cannon?
No.
So, no is to approve. Mr. Caldwell?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Mizell?
No.
And the vice chair says yes. So, we have three yeses and four nos. So, that's to decline.
Yes, that motion fails.
So, that motion fails. Does anybody else want to make another motion? Which would be then, I guess, to approve.
It could be to postpone those, suppose, couldn't it?
Right, if we don't get a motion, it would just postpone till, or table till next month.
We could table it and.
Preferably with some request as to what to look at, what to provide, what, you know, something.
I would like to table this, I would like to make the motion to table this proposal until next month, because I will personally take the time to, to try to find out some more information from our city and county government. I don't think we would possibly have a solution in thirty days, but it, it would ease my mind, one way or the other. That is just my personal feelings on this matter. That's why I would like to table it for a month.
Could I make a suggestion, too?
Yes, sir.
That during that same thirty days, to ask the applicant if they would look again at the townhouses in the front and be a little more specific as to why they can't be someplace else?
So, there's a motion by Mr. Shirley to postpone?
A second.
And second by Mr. Cannon?
And to make those two requests.
And those two requests. So, requests is the, the roads.
They're wanting to look into what the situation is on the road and for the applicant.
Moving in the townhomes.
Yeah, to look into the townhomes and to look at.
And I guess I'll do a roll, roll, roll call. Mr. Moran, this is just a table.
Excuse me, did you get a second?
Uh, yes, by Mr. Cannon.
Oh, okay, all right, excuse me.
No, you're fine. This is just a table. So, a yes would be to table it, and a no would be to. Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mizell?
Yes.
And vice chair would say yes as well. All right, we'll table till next month.
I would like to make one other statement, though, before you folks all leave. Don't get any misconceptions that this property will not be developed, because I can guarantee you it will be developed. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's Mr. Jones.
Can we take, can we take a break?
Yeah.
Yes, we're going to take a couple-minute break.
We're going to take a break.
I was wondering, this is right here. I was looking for it going.
On Pike Street, from R1B Low Density Residential to, um, B2 Highway Commercial. This property is, um, uh, South, there.
Can we go to the side?
Maybe east of Pike Street, I forget which direction it is. But, um, it's a, a property that's been used in the past commercially. Um, but it stopped, the use stopped on the property, so it lost its non-conforming status. And then the new buyer came in and bought it assuming it was commercial, uh, and then realized it was R1B. Uh, there are, there are a couple of properties, zoned residential on the street. But the majority is, uh, are, majority of properties especially closer to downtown. I think one lot over starts the commercial. And there's zone B3 Downtown Commercial. So the request is rezone. Um, originally it was a request to B3, which is highway, uh...
Also forgot to state, this is a public hearing also.
Yes, this is a public hearing.
Yep.
Um, the original request was B3, which, uh, probably would be more appropriate. Uh, but the, the use proposed is a, uh, used car sales. And, uh, used car lots are not allowed in B3, which is our downtown district. So the request was amended to B2 Highway Commercial. So when we look at a zone change, we look at KRS 100 Guidance on Zone Change Requests. And, uh, what we look at is whether the, the requested zone complies with the Conference of Plan Future Land Use Map. This area is designated downtown. So the request partially complies in that it's a commercial district. But it's not a district that's typically allowed in downtowns, just because we try to avoid large areas of surface parking in downtown. Um, therefore, we need to look at, uh, the two other, um, criteria. We call them part A and part B. That's how they're labeled in KRS. Part A is that the existing zoning classification is inappropriate. And this does apply to this property because it's been used commercial for a long period of time. It has, um, already been improved with a, uh, kind of a, a commercial storage building with the garage, um, an overhead garage door. And then kind of a utility building, I guess it was some type of waterworks. But there's, there's also another utility building on the property. It is, uh, almost fully gravelled, the lot, and there is a, a fence of like a farm fence across the front. So it's not a, it's not a residential lot, it's, it's kind of a commercial lot. It's been zoned commercial, but it's been lawfully non-conforming. Uh, so part, uh, our determination is that part A does apply. So it does meet the KRS requirements for zone change. Uh, so we are recommending approval. The, the three conditions that we are suggesting is, um, one, that the applicant comply with the landscape requirements, um, for our land buffers ordinance between commercial and residential property. And that requires a fifteen-foot landscape buffer between, uh, commercial and residential. And we're suggesting that they just maintain the existing tree line because it's pretty heavily, um, wouldn't say treed, but there's trees and bushes along the back that are pretty, uh, full. So they maintain a fifteen-foot landscape buffer across the back. That any freestanding signs meet the B1, which is Neighborhood Commercial, um, standards, which is a monument sign, um, maximum of, uh, eight feet in height. Um, and the last one, that the, the vehicle entrance, it's right now, it's about probably twenty, twenty-five to thirty feet wide. They have one entrance and the rest is fence. That they maintain that entrance a maximum of forty feet in width. That they don't take down the, the fence and then open up the whole length of the lot for driveway access. That they kind of maintain that limited access. Um, in those, so we're recommending approval with those three conditions. We got four in there. So with those four conditions?
Three on here.
I, I think I mentioned all of them.
I've only got three in my...
Yeah.
I think it, I, I think it, uh, two is split and...
Two split, okay, that's what it is.
So it should be three and four.
Okay, yeah. With all the conditions in the staff report?
Oh.
The only other thing I noticed out there, and I didn't put in my staff report, is that it drops off down to the creek in the back. And it seems pretty dangerous to me, uh, to have vehicles pulling in and out. And it's like a twenty or thirty-foot drop down to the creek. So I would suggest adding another condition, that they fence the rear portion with the same kind of, uh, horse-type fence along the back or some kind of fence so that you don't accidentally have cars driving off the back. Um, so I would suggest adding that. I don't know if you would wanna add that.
Number five.
You do make a recommendation and it goes to the city of Sadieville for final approval.
Any questions for Joe? Is the applicant present? Not here tonight. Applicant's not here, Joe. Does anyone wanna speak for the applicant or speak on behalf of this?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Mike. State your name, Mike.
My name is Mike Mizell. I live in Sadieville. I own the property, uh, directly next to, uh, what used to be called the Waterloo. It's where they had a water drop, the green, little green building you see there. And as Joe said, it's thirty, forty years it's been used as a commercial property. Uh, for the last several years, it's been a vacant lot. I think this is a much better use than a vacant lot. And Joe, everything in Sadieville has a drop-off. That's all he has. But, uh, I feel that, uh, it would be a benefit to the community to have another business up there. So I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wanna speak? Commission, have any more questions? We'll close the public hearing. Uh, if there's not any more discussion, we'll make a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve ZMA dash two thousand sixteen dash fifty-six with the additional, uh, recommendation number five to fence the back side of the lot. I don't know what...
Motion by Mr. Solsky?
Yep.
A second. Second by Mr. Moran. Uh, has to be a roll call. Uh, Mr. Solsky?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Miss Mizell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes also. Motion approved.
If, if, if I may interrupt just a second. Uh, I was fiddling instead of paying attention.
I made a motion to approve.
Yeah, but did you adopt the recommendations in the staff report?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. In that case, my only other question is, we've got only three here. Freestanding should be number three and vehicle entrance should be number four and then the fence should be number five. Is that, is that right, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Shirley.
All right, moving right along. Soon as I find my agenda.
Here you go.
Put my glasses on.
Put your glasses on.
Uh, next is PDP two thousand sixteen dash fifty-seven Online Transport.
Uh, the, the applicant is proposing to, to construct, uh, an eleven thousand two hundred square foot, uh, building, uh, at six fifty-six Dela Plain Road. Um, it's a ten-acre site. It's currently zoned I1 light industrial. Um, it's surrounded, uh, by properties that are zoned A1 for agricultural, although they're not used, uh, for agricultural purposes. And then, uh, on the other side of Old Dela Plain and Cherry Blossom, uh, you have Toyota, that's zoned, uh, I2, uh, heavy industrial. Um, excuse me. Uh, there, the, uh, the access to the project site is from, is from Old Dela Plain Road. Um, and I'll, I'll get into the parking in a bit. Um, so this is, this is the project site. Um, you've got Old Dela Plain Road here. Uh, it, it's right at the intersection of Old Dela Plain and Sims Pike. Runs north-south here. Cherry Blossom and the heavy industrial properties here are to the south as you can see. Um, this is, uh, uh, I kind of cropped in so we could see the, the site plan a little bit better. Um, there is an existing entrance here off of Old Dela Plain. Uh, the, the hatched area here that kind of comes in, the driveway that, and the parking area surrounding the building, as well as this portion here in the back, uh, is, is proposed to be paved. The applicant is proposing paving that area. Um, being that it'll be the area, you know, mo- most frequently used on a, on a daily basis. Um, uh, contained in this area, uh, the applicant is showing an appropriate amount of parking, uh, given, given the use and the number of employees. Uh, they are showing twelve parking spaces, uh, one of which will be handicap accessible. Um, another, another thing to note is, this area that I've kind of outlined and, and read here, uh, is, is an area that the applicant is proposing, um, to use gravel in. Um, the applicant, uh, operates a, a trucking business. Um, the, the building on site will be used for, for light vehicle maintenance, uh, things like oil changes, um, more intensive repairs or, or, uh, transmission changes, things like that. Uh, the applicant has indicated would be done off-site, so there's a minimal, uh, chance that, you know, there would be spills of, of dangerous, you know, liquids or things of that nature, uh, at the project site. Um, but the, the applicant would from time to time need to store, um, the, the trucks themselves on the site. And that's, uh, mostly what the, the gravel area would be used for. Uh, the applicant did say that the trailers would mostly be stored on Toyota's, at, on Toyota's facility, you know, for, for loading and unloading purposes, I imagine. Um, so I did wanna, um, talk briefly, uh, a bit about, uh, what, what the zoning ordinance says regarding gr- uh, gravel or what it does not say. Um, I think it's important to note that there isn't specifically a, a ban on, on gravel. Um, but what it does say is that surfacing of parking, loading and unloading spaces, uh, and the access there to, shall be surfaced in a manner adequate to eliminate dust and mud and to eliminate damaging runoff onto a budding or nearby properties. Um, now, obviously, you know, gravel, gravel can produce dust. Um, but at the same time, you know, it is a, a fairly large site. It's located, uh, outside city limits. Um, and, you know, has a, a long driveway. Any, any mud or, or rocks that might be picked up by trucks, you know, would likely come off, uh, as, as, you know, the trucks were leaving the faci- the facility on the applicant's own paved driveway. Um, I also think that there, there could be a balance we could strike here between, um, you know, seeing a large area, uh, become paved and, and become, uh, a large impervious surface versus having some, you know, some ability for the, the stormwater that might otherwise, you know, run off rather rapidly and, and require, uh, dramatic site improvements to, to contain, uh, stormwater. You know, we can lessen some of those effects if we, if we do allow some gravel on the site. So I do, I do think that the, the use of gravel in this, in this situation, um, you know, as the applicant has shown, is appropriate. Um, I guess there is a one, one, uh, waiver that's being requested. I actually didn't touch on that too much. Um, but as... that too much. Um, but as far as the, the landscaping, uh, there's, there's an existing, uh, tree line that surrounds the project site on, on at least three sides, and the applicant is proposing to, to retain that. Um, and that'll go towards meeting their, their canopy requirements, um, which, which should be met. But the, the waiver request comes, there's this little, uh, parking island that typically we require to be, you know, planted with grass and, and have, uh, at least, at least one tree, uh, in it. Um, but as you can see, there are, uh, utility lines that run, uh, east and west across the property. There's also, uh, an easement that comes this way, and, and they all serve a utility pole. Um, they all come to a utility pole that, that exists, uh, there in that island. So it doesn't really make all that much sense for us to require a tree to be planted there. Um, so I'm recommending approval of a waiver to, to eliminate that, that lone tree, given that they are providing an excessive amount of, uh, canopy to be preserved on the site already. So with that being said, I recommend approval of the application, uh, with, with the four conditions, uh, listed there, uh, including that, you know, they, they comply with the landscaping ordinance with the understanding that should any of those natural trees, uh, you know, die or become diseased, that, uh, they, they then be replaced to maintain that landscaping buffer.
Anyone having questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. Does the applicant here speak? Just come up and state your name, please.
Billy Cunningham.
And you're sworn? Oh, no, you're signed, you're not sworn.
I, I, I raised my hand in the very beginning, but I will.
Oh, oh, wait, no, no. Raise your hand once, that's plenty for me.
We, uh, we've operated, uh, right next to this facility since nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, and like I said, there'd be very few, very few trailers there at all, maybe just to go over to get a taillight or something put on it. This is going to be a very, very light maintenance place. The tractors will not even be there during the week, Harley. They would just be parked across the back on the weekend, uh, and we just purchased this instead of renting. We've rented right next door, since, like I said, since nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, the reason we wanted to gravel.
You've been at Eastside?
Yes, over in the back, yes, since nineteen eighty-eight.
Okay.
Uh, and we're going to leave off the perimeter with the trees. We, we don't want to change any habitat that we don't have to, but the gravel, if we go, keep going around the building with the trucks, the blacktop or the concrete, it just, it re- it doesn't end up working well. So what we want to do is just gravel around the building, and as a need more parking, we will blacktop the concrete.
You, so, so you're in agreeance with all the recommendations by staff?
Yes, yes, I'm, I, yes, I'm fine with that.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
How, how do we determine when there's a need to concrete or gravel? Uh, you know, we're not gonna... Joe, how do we do that? Or Brent? You know, to, to, to.
That's kind of like, that's kind of like my question, too, about the trees, you know? How are we ever going to know when a tree needs to be replaced, or?
Yeah.
Well, right now, I can't see either.
And I appreciate your comment, but I just, for them, I know they're not going to go out there and go, "Ah, you got too many trucks, so we, now we need to, uh, blacktop two more acres or three more acres," and it's either a yes or no. Oh, there goes, brother.
You got a good comment, though.
Uh, no, it, it, it's, my interpretation of what, what he just said was, wasn't so much, uh, for, for the truck traffic. It was as if, if they grew to where they needed more, like, employee parking.
Parking.
Then they would expand to, to cover the employee parking. But his comment was that the, the tractors, the truck tractors are so heavy that if you put pavement down, it just tears the pavement up. So they'd actually, they prefer gravel for that reason.
Does, does that mean that this main entrance being blacktop will have to be put, put in extra thick pavement, or?
Yes, yes, that's. And, and the building, the way the, uh, as far off. It's probably going to cost about four hundred thousand dollars just to build a road from Dela Plain Road to the building. Because of the way the property lays, we had to push the building all the way to the back. So that's why we wanted to put gravel, but the, it will be blacktop and it will be, I think it has to be, I forget what the, the engineer said it has to be, but.
Probably close to eight inches, I think.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. I expect some call next.
I live right across the street from this company.
State your name, please.
My name is Inez Williams.
Thank you.
I live on one-four-three Sims Pike.
Did you swear in? Sworn, you, you've signed but not sworn, yes.
I'll swear.
Do you swear affirm the statement you're about to give, with the truth, best your information and belief?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
This property, uh, where these trucks were, where he's talking about where he's renting, so these people come in and they park, the gravel's always everywhere, and you can see the trucks. Sometimes there's a, there was an empty lot next door, and they parked those trailers there. And now all this wooded area that he's talking about, uh, some of the trees are cut off because they were used as fence posts, and then there's shrub in there. So that's going to have to be redone. I can tell you right now. And I, you know, I'm not really happy because I'm afraid my property value is going to go down. And I don't really think that there should be any truck traffic coming down there, and they have always come down there every now and then to come through that parking area, and they turn left. That's the big, the big trucks. And so there they are. I don't want to have to pay higher taxes to have to take care of these roads, because they do make big ruts. And I understand about the gravel situation. I, I understand that they're heavy, but I don't really want my property value to come down, because all you can see, because I, I'm going to put my house up for sale sometime, and when I do, I don't want somebody to say, "Well, there's all these trucks here. I ca- I can't buy this home." There has to be something that's going to be some kind of landscape barrier that's going to look a lot better than what it is right now. Because right now, it's just a mess. It's never been taken care of. So there's shrubs and half-trees and some big trees and.
Did you say you're Mrs. Williams?
I'm Mrs. Williams.
Okay, I see where you're at.
So I'm right across the street from there. I have no objection to them being there. I just need for it to look like, you know, it's not some kind of empty trailers just thrown all over the place there, like usually it has been. And they just park them there, and you can see them from the road. So I'm not opposed to them do, uh, putting a building there. I just want it to look nice and have some kind of a landscape buffer that's not mishmashed, little bit here, bigger there, whatever.
We'll let, uh, Matt answer that, if you would, Matt.
Um, I mean, one, one thing we can do, um, I do have here, on here, that, um, under, under condition one, uh, on the conditions of approval, um, that, that the applicant submit a landscaping plan, um, specifically indicating all, all the areas where trees will be preserved. If there's gaps, uh, on, on that plan, um, we'll have the applicant fill them in with new plantings, um, when, when they bring in the final development plan. Um, and, and we can, you know, obviously, I'll go out and, and look at the site, um, and, and make sure that all the trees that they're marking are, you know, actual trees and not necessarily just, you know, twigs with, uh, honeysuckle or, or something along, along, along those lines.
Can we add that on number one, that not only says indicating all trees to be preserved, but we probably need to fill any gaps, so.
I'll, I'll add that to the conditions, if, if you all make that part of any motion.
I've got a question for Mr. Keith. Or, I'm sorry, did you say, are you?
Cunningham.
Kind of Cunningham, I'm sorry. Mr. Cunningham, would you be opposed to a buffer, let's say maybe along Sims Pike to help Ms. Williams? Um, maybe the length of the gravel, which should look like it might be, I, he'd take, that's nine hundred foot, so.
If you'll, if you'll put the, or, here, I don't know how to do this.
Joe, would you put the picture back up for, or Matt?
We were not going to bother anything at Sims Pike. We just bought the property, so we, we, of course, it's not been maintained, but we just got, we just had it like six months, so, and it needs to be mowed, it needs to be cleaned up. But we was not going to go do anything towards Sims Pike at all, and actually on the other side of us either. It's some nice mature trees there, and, you know, we probably stayed twenty, twenty-five foot away from anything there. I mean, we, we just wanted to keep it as natural-looking as possible. And, and I agree with her. She don't want to look at trucks and trailers. There's like six people that rent the property where we're at currently, so all the mess he's looking at there is not, I mean, it's, it's, so we want to make it look neat.
Thank you.
Matt, as far as that landscape buffer on Sims Pike, is it what you've seen out there, is that going to meet what you say, what we need?
Um, I mean, it's, it's hard, I mean, it's kind of hard to say right now. I mean, it's, uh, I mean, th- there are some trees existing out there, um, and, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure. I mean, the applicant may need to trim some, I mean, particularly along the north side, and it's possible they'd be need to trim some back, uh, and while, while grading the site, but, um, it's, it's hard to say along, along Sims Pike. I mean, they're, they're far enough away that you shouldn't need to touch it, um, but I can double-check and make sure that, um, what they're proposing will meet the, the landscaping ordinance.
You know, questions for Matt? I know the gentleman out here wants to speak, I think. Oh, okay. I didn't see you. Okay, you, come on in.
Steve Watson.
Yeah, Charlie, I've heard. Everything's good.
Thank you.
I live on the other side of Sims Pike.
You're next door to Ms. Williams?
I front out on Dela Plain Road. I live in the Old County Courthouse.
Yeah, you know, she's, you're on the corner, and she's right behind you going down Sims.
Yeah, I live, I live in the Old County Courthouse, Charlie.
Right.
Everybody knows where it's at. Let me address first.
Sorry to confetch it, but.
First of all, let me address the buffer that you're, that they say is existing now. It's non-existent. You have an old fence row that was fenced off fifty years ago that was never cut. Then these bulldozers are taking to it. There's no, there's no buffer there. It's just nothing but a wild growth, just like we sell on every farm. What I would ask, and I, it's really, I have no opposition to, we've known each other thirty years.
Right.
We need a nice buffer there. That's the first thing we ask.
Okay.
So don't, don't, don't think that there's anything there. Actually, needs chainsaw taking the ninety percent of it. I think you, you went out there and looked at a lot of it, we trimmed up, we cleaned. So that would be the first thing that I would ask. I have no opposition. I know, I know the type of business they run. They're already there, to be honest about it. The only thing they're doing is moving from one lot to another. That's all they're doing. But I will say this about the gravel and the dust, where they're going in and out of Eastside now, they have to keep it watered, constantly. So I have a concern over it, so I'd ask that you look about something about that, especially the main entrance. The gravel parking lot, I don't have an interest, I don't have an issue with, because they're not moving that fast. But when they're going in and out, and, you know, they're not speeding, it's.
That's all paved.
That's paved.
That is paved.
All paved, yeah.
For whatever reason.
Great, great. Eastside's not. And they've always, as a matter of fact, a lot that they bought, a lot of times, you can see the grass over, it's, it's, it's covered in dust. Okay, so that is an issue. But if they'll put a nice buffer, fifty-foot wide, something that's impervious, that you can't see through, that they'll go to that expense and make that commitment, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
My question is, are we, are we asking to, to keep the existing mature trees, or clean the whole thing out? I mean, i- if there are trees there, do you want those trees preserved, right?
Steve, it's just like on, on them. If it's a good tree, you keep it.
I drove by there recently, but I'd.
What, what you actually got there is a fence row, just a little, you know, you have to pick your, so, that looks all right.
Yeah, there's probably some. Probably some honeysuckle bushes and things in there.
You keep what's good, get rid of the bad, that enough, that's all I ask.
We've had that conversation a lot lately. Some people like honeysuckle bushes and some people don't.
These are big mature trees because of.
I would, I would, I would like to suggest that you do some evergreen planting.
Can you come back up to the microphone if you want to speak?
When you do incorporate that zone? When it, when it laid out, do a nice mixture of trees, or at least you have some evergreens in there, so right now, all leaves are off of, mine would not be anything there. It's, it's like, nothing. Now, in the summertime, when it's overgrown and it's wild and everything, no, you can't hardly see through it. But you're welcome to come out on Mrs. Williams' place, my neither one, and you can stand and see through it right now, just like loo- looking through a storm door.
No leaves.
I, I have a picture. So I took a picture of some of the, of the trees.
So you'd like to see some evergreens as well, I guess?
I, I would. I'd like to see anything that's kind of standing green during the winter.
You got a picture of it, John?
Would you agree with that idea?
Yes, I agree.
Don't tell you who.
And I, you know, I, I would propose a good mixture of something that looks natural, with some evergreens in with it, uh, it's a pathetically pleasing. And when you buy a tree, they're all about the same price, I'm sure, so.
I think I would, um, make a comment, then maybe to add a number ten, and maybe have Brent and Joe, or Joe review it. A buffer be added and managed down Sims Pike, if that's okay with the applicant. And then again, you, you can maybe ma- uh, discuss that with Mr. Cunningham. Brent?
I'd be willing to discuss everything. I, I just want it.
You have to come back up to the microphone.
You got to come up to the microphone.
I just want it to look nice, so that if anybody comes looking at any of that property down that road, they're not going to see, you know, scraggly bushes and dead trees and an old fence that's, you know, all rusted, hanging down. So I had to pick up a PC the other day, because it fell off the fence and in, into the road. Had to pick it up, so the mailman wouldn't run over it. I mean, that's how, how old that is. And, you know, it's just unsightly. I don't care what kind of trees you put on there, but, but if you put some evergreens or whatever, they stay green during the winter. I don't care.
You want to comment, Mr. Cunningham?
How, how do I point here with this, or do I? So all of this is going to be all green space right here, and, and we want to clean this whole area up. I mean, I was going to leave all the trees, especially the mature trees, and, and I don't mind putting some evergreens in, but I don't want to put evergreens all the way out. Right here, we're six or eight foot above Sims Pike. So, I mean, we're so high, you can't, I do not mind covering the building up, because there's nothing going to be here but green space. I mean, you want it to be pretty, but I'll do whatever, I want to be a good neighbor. We've not been a good neighbor in the past, but we didn't own it, we just rented it. And, and that's why we purchased this. We want to be a good neighbor, and we're not going to have a trash-up place. We want it to look nice and, and to, to help the community.
Does anybody here agree that the buffer probably only needs to go about halfway down Sims, back around the parking area?
I think through that gravel area. I, I think through the gravel area.
Beyond, beyond, I think it needs to go slightly beyond the gravel area, just.
Just a little bit.
You mean like right here?
Yes.
Okay.
About halfway.
About halfway.
Because we're probably six foot off of Sims Pike right there, and I don't mind. I just hate to put it all the way out here, because it really, I mean, it just.
I mean, the only thing we're asking, if, if you don't need the property over there, plant a few, uh, small evergreens and wait for them to grow up, it doesn't matter.
We don't have a problem with that at all. And we're, 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 uh, blacktopping back here in the back, uh, to, to keep any dust down from our current location now, uh, and like I said, this all just be gravel, and this is all blacktop to keep the dust down. Of course, this dust is just coming over here, but we're, we're just, we're just trying to do it the right way, and we don't mind to put some evergreens out. We will make that look nice. And, and I agree, it needs to be cleaned up, but we just haven't done any construction yet.
I'm looking, and fortunately, you're not going to be able to see it here, but on this map, I'm looking at three adjoining properties, so are you still going to maintain those other three adjoining? Okay, because is there three?
Uh, there's just one property that wraps all the way around that one.
So I've got three separate, could you look?
I think it's divided into different parcels.
Is that what it is? Because, man, I see trailers all over the place.
Right, there, and there's like five people there. We're not main, we will be leaving all of this. Yeah, this is the lot we just bought.
Right, this is the lot you just bought.
Right.
Who's this?
Uh, this is PJ's.
Also, none of this is yours?
There's like four different lots, five different lots here.
See on the map, it says everything's Eastside Truck and Trailer Service.
Yeah, changed names. So it's like five different companies.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just thought there was a lot of trailers.
Matt, on a, they keep talking about that fence going up through there. Do we not have no requirements on a zone change for this, for, for fencing or anything, or? It's just like every time we turn around, we're putting up new fences on somebody's property?
Um, a requirement for, for fencing?
Yeah.
Uh, here, um, I don't think, I mean, first, this isn't a zone change. This is already zoned, uh, he- uh, light industrial. Um, so it's all, I mean, it's, it's zoned appropriately for the use already.
As long as the adjacent property owners are all right with it, they, they'd be.
Okay.
So there's, I mean, the, the fence, the fence requirement we've heard a, a lot about recently is, um, between the A-five zone, the rural residential, and the, and the agricultural, the A-one.
Or even in town, if you're commercial next to residential.
Yeah, there, there are landscaping buffers required between, um, between industrial and, and agricultural. Um, but in this case, you know, th- there, there is an existing, uh, buffer, uh, in, in place, um, and, and also, I, I, I mentioned it in, in one of the conditions of approval. Uh, that, I mean, that could be waived if, you know, Eastside Trucking, uh, agrees to it. And and also, I I mentioned it in in one of the conditions of approval, that I mean, that could be waived if, you know, East Side Trucking agrees to it. That's something that's built into the into the landscape ordinance.
Anybody else have any questions? Comments?
That that was condition number eight, correct? Landscaping buffer along the north and western property lines could be waived and signed up today.
I I'll make my comments, and then we go on. I I like the evergreens halfway down Sims Pike. He's agreed to do that. I think we already add that as a condition in there. And I will say this, I don't like the gravel. I've I've been opposed to this gravel issue for a while. We we've been passing it and giving the waivers. I don't see why we should stop with him not giving the waivers, but sooner or later, we got to stop somewheres and do something with this waiver on this gravel. This man's not going to own this property forever. Somebody else is going to own this property. What it turns into then, who knows? But once it's gravel, it's going to stay that way. It's not never going to be black topped.
If you put if you put black top in there sufficient to support those trucks, they probably can't afford to do it.
What if Toyota didn't put black top in theirs?
They own a lot of places. They they use a lot of gravel.
Toyota's got a lot of black top out there. That's all I'm saying.
They got a lot of gravel as well.
They got a lot of gravel.
Just saying, that's, you know, that's one of our ordinances, black top, and we're giving waivers, giving waivers. If we want to, if we keep giving the waivers or variances, let's just change the ordinance. I don't see why we have an ordinance, and we just keep giving waivers for it all the time.
I think the the main thing is try to reduce the the dust. The uh, and and I think you you're taking care of most of the dust problem in the in the areas that you drive in and out. I mean, that's when you get speed on gravel, that's when you start generating dust. If you're backing in with nothing but a trailer, you're not creating much dust.
Any more comments? Questions?
While we're talking about it, yeah.
Go ahead.
I have to disagree with you, Mr. Chair, on the gravel. In a situation like this, uh, in these situations, uh, I would think, and Brent could correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not a engineer, of course, by any means, but uh, because of the what solid paving causes, as far as stormwater runoff, I think is more of a detriment in these situations than than being able to use gravel. Where we've got a pervious uh. Area that the rainwater, also water runoff from particular new roof lines would be absorbed into the gravel ready rather than running off of the property. I just particularly like the idea of that. I know there's some drawbacks to it, but there's also a lot of major drawbacks with paved areas.
I agree with you.
And causes more global warming also.
And it's twenty times more expensive than gravel.
Well, it does. Plus, it makes it it's a detriment for this man to make a little bit more money, too.
Well, that's true, too. I hate to see it costing him more money.
That's my only comment. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Is that motion with the waiver and the variance?
It is. Well, actually, we're calling them, yeah, waivers. It doesn't say anything about variances. It's waivers.
Did you add the buffer on Sims Pike?
I've added number ten.
Yes, and I was going to say.
Just evergreen halfway down toward Cherry Blossom.
The two waivers, allow gravel, allow uh, excess tree canopy. Well. Wait, that's going to be kind of an oxymoron, isn't it? Allow the the excess tree canopy to meet the requirement for a tree to be placed.
Landscape that.
Oh, and landscape.
We're not going for anything landscape value because it's it's right under power lines. And there's a pole right on there.
Yeah, okay. So my motion is to to approve with those two waivers and the other ten conditions of approval.
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Solsky, I mean, a motion by Mr. Shirley, second by Mr. Solsky. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'm refusing to read this thing word for word, and I still can't find gravel in here. What am I overlooking?
It cuts on the previous page.
I don't have a previous page.
No, he's reading the ordinance now. You need to sign, please. Chuck Charlie has something for you to sign.
I have, well, I guess one of these is. I'm just saying, in my mind, there's some exceptions to that. Now, it may not be just a cover all because in the areas it's close to town. Do something about the gravel.
Sorry, man.
I don't know. I was just waiting.
Next item of business is ZMA twenty sixteen dash fifty-eight Mary Breeding Estate. This is a zone change, so this is a public change.
Um, the subject property in this application is a little over thirty acres in size. Um, it's located inside the urban service boundary, but is located outside of city limits currently. Although it is adjoining city limits in in two places, both on the south side and and on the north side. Uh, it's currently zoned A-one agricultural, and the applicant is proposing to rezone it to a combination of of R-two, which is our medium density residential, and C-one, which is our conservation district. Uh, it's located on and will have access off of East Main Extended. And there's there's no variances or anything like that requested at this time with this application. Um, so here's, this is this is the subject property. I kind of outlined it and gave it a little hatching, so it'll be a little bit easier to see. Um, here's uh, East Main Extended runs this way. This is the quarry over here on the other side of of the interstate, and this is the bypass. So it's outside of the bypass, but inside the interstate. Uh, city city limits, as you can see, run here along the bypass and then down down here encompassing all of this area inside city limits. And this uh, high-density residential area here across the Elkhorn is is also located in city limits. So it's really just kind of these these um, these properties here are kind of an island that are outside of city limits, but inside the urban service boundary. Before I get in before I get into the 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 concept plan, I did look at the the future land use map, uh, as well as the 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 text of the comprehensive plan. Um, and I did find that, you know, it was in compliance with both of those to to rezone this application to what the the applicant is proposing. Um, the future land use map designates this area as urban residential, um, which would certainly fit into, you know, something is something that the R-two zoning uh, district fits into. Um, I think it's also appropriate, as we move into the site plan, some of the features the applicant has incorporated into into their concept plan, um, as far as sort of meeting with um, both the location and and the comprehensive plan. Um, the applicant has also proposed taking these areas that I've that I've outlined here, in particular, and here along the Elkhorn. Uh, and they are proposing to rezone those to C-one, which is our conservation district. Um, the environmental um, quality element of the comprehensive plan sort of gives us guidance as far as that's concerned, and it and it recommends that that all all of all of our creeks, our flood plains, and steep slopes, things of that nature, that um, are sort of environmentally sensitive areas, be rezoned to C-one whenever development occurs. So I was, it's very appropriate that they've requested those zoning districts in those areas. Um, this area up here, obviously, is is along the Elkhorn. And this area here is um, some steep slopes associated with it. As you can see, there's some some closed contours that lead down to a depression area that's just off the applicant's property. Uh, which may potentially be a sinkhole. It's obviously no ge- geologic studies been done on on the adjoining property to determine if that is in fact a sinkhole. Um, so with that in with that in mind, I do think, you know, part one of KRS, excuse me, KRS one hundred point two one three applies. We don't need to necessarily consider parts A and B, since it does comply with the the current comprehensive plan and future land use map. So before I I go into the the concept plan, fortunately, I'm recommending approval of of the zone change request. And then looking. Looking at the the concept plan itself, um, and and the R-two zoning district that the the applicant is is proposing. Um, the applicant is showing two hundred and forty-six dwelling units. Those are proposed to be in in six plexes, forty-one of those six plexes. Um, there's a twenty-two point three-five net acres that they're looking to to rezone to the R-two zoning. Um, that would allow them, you know, or or a future developer, should they choose to sell it, you know, an absolute maximum of two hundred and sixty-eight dwelling units. Um, so what the applicant is proposing in the concept plan is somewhat of a step down from that, which I think is appropriate, given how close they are to both the Elkhorn and to, you know, the the outside of city limits. I think it is appropriate that we have sort of a, you know, maybe we don't maximize the the allowable density as we approach those areas. Um, looking at the the access points that the applicants have shown, um, there there are two access points that they've shown off of East Main Extended, um, which which meets with with our our regulations. Uh, as far as multifamily units, we require a second entrance. Um, you know, whenever we hit that that two hundred multi-unit threshold, so that they are showing two uh, two entrances. Um, they're also showing stubs out onto the adjoining properties to the east and the west, you know, to provide some additional connectivity. Um, the the uh, the concept plan at least is is fairly pedestrian-friendly. The block lengths are very short, uh, which which is very helpful for that. Um, and and in addition to that, they have a a high level of connectivity. Um, you know, if we look at the the connectivity index, it's it's, you know, at one point seven. Um, that's, you know, there's there's a lot more, I guess, street connections than there are cul-de-sacs and things of that nature. So it makes it it a lot more pedestrian-friendly, but it also makes it a lot easier for emergency vehicles to get, you know, in and out of the the neighborhood should there be an emergency and and one of the streets or multiple of the streets be closed. As far as the traffic study, and this, I know this, there were some questions regarding, you know, the traffic study when we when we talked at workshop. Um, I included the the letter from the the engineer who did the traffic study in in the material I provided for you today. Um, but I did want to kind of summarize just briefly some of the things that it talks about. Um, they did conduct AM and PM peak hour traffic counts. Uh, and it was done assuming two hundred and fifty-two units, which is is more than they're proposing in the concept plan. You know, the the traffic study concluded that the intersection at East Main Extended in the bypass would not require any improvements. Uh, the the uh, the proposed additional volume, you know, won't push the capacity of that intersection beyond what it could handle. Um, the applicant also, and I I know this came up specifically at the workshop, but the applicant did do a left-turn warrant street for East Main Extended for vehicles coming from the bypass making a left turn into the proposed development. Uh, they did, uh, you know, they studied that and looked at it, um, and it was determined that that also does does not require a left, a dedicated left-turn lane. Um, partly because, you know, there's just not enough uh, volume of traffic coming opposed to, um, I guess, the direction you would be going to to make that left turn in, being that there's only one, really, uh, only a couple of other properties further to the east, um, one of which being being the quarry. So the the traffic study determined that, you know, there there's no improvements that are needed for this proposed development. Um, as far as landscaping, um, it's not shown on the concept plan. Um, but any any future development plans or subdivision plaques would need to show a ten-foot landscaping buffer along both the the eastern and western property lines. Um, the landscape ordinance specifies how that would need to be populated. Um, but we do require buffering between multifamily units and and any single-family units. So, uh, given that the the neighboring properties are zoned agricultural and single-family dwelling units are a permitted use in those zoning districts, it would be appropriate to screen those um, with with a landscaping buffer. The exception being that, you know, should the neighboring properties develop before this property does, and and they develop into multifamily units themselves, obviously, no landscaping buffer would be required. Um, in addition to that, any future development plans or subdivision plaques would would need to to factor in the the canopy requirements that were passed roughly a year ago, and and take into account any trees that may be preserved, uh, and and make sure that they're going to meet those requirements. So, uh, as I mentioned before, I'm recommending approval of of the zone change. Um, I think the the concept plan that the applicants have provided shows a uh, a well-thought-out way that we could do this style of of, you know, density and development on the project site. Um, and and I'm recommending it with the the conditions that are shown there, all six of them.
Any questions for Matt this time? Thank you, Matt. Is the applicant here to speak?
Hello, Evan McDaniel, uh, with Element Design, representing Mr. Daniel Breeden. Um, like like Matt said, this is a a concept plan for this to acquire an R-two zone with the also the conservation zones. Um, the building layouts is more or less a template that could be used to to acquire the densities for this property and to see, it was more or less a study to see what we can get on this property in in an R-two density. Um, but we feel like the layout provides an opportunity for an urban pedestrian-friendly development. So, uh, we, in the areas that weren't developable with steep slopes or in in environmental conditions, we're uh, proposed to be zoned to the conservation zone. And especially with the Elkhorn Creek back there, uh, there's plenty of area to give a, you know, riparian buffer protective from any development. And also enough space stubbed out back there to provide a park or public access to to the creek.
Did anyone have any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Is anyone else here to speak on this application?
Sir.
Thank you. Matt, do we know that the notifications went out on this?
Uh, I believe so, yeah. The applicant submitted the affidavit with the photos of the sign and everything.
Just hard to believe there's nobody here for it. That's different.
It's called thank your blessings, Mr. Chairman.
It's different, isn't it? It's different.
Is there any other comments or anything? Like I said in the workshop, the only thing I'm worried about is the traffic on the road, I think. The way those trucks run through there to the rock quarry is really, really worrisome. We already got a subdivision on the other side. It's only, that's only issue I have with the whole thing.
The road is, the road is eighteen twenty feet, though, isn't it?
What's it had to get to before? Has to be like a divided road, Joe? A divided road.
What is it and what's the width?
Yeah, what is what is a, I mean, how much traffic has to get on that road before it becomes a divided road? Is that just, is there a something that determines that or something, or?
Yeah, I think it's based on just the um, the design um, capacity of it. I'm not sure the number.
Matt knows it. Any more questions or comments? If not, well, made a motion.
Brent's got it.
Okay, Brent's going to comment.
And and I'm just going to put a little um, plug in here for what I I think needs to be an ongoing discussion. It's not necessarily pertains to this project directly, but I want you to, it's a good example. The traffic study looked at this one piece of property as how it affects the traffic signal out of the bypass. And it shows that it's fine. Well, then the next comes in, maybe it's still, maybe it's still okay. The last piece of property, when they do theirs, now all of a sudden, maybe it shows it needs improvements. And so I'd like for the community to start thinking about maybe the traffic study ought to consider full development of all properties, see if improvements are required, and then prorate how much this one development might, should put in for future improvements. So we're not set up that way now, but I think the community ought to start considering that sort of thing.
Impact fees.
Are you supposed to say that out loud? And that's certainly very wise and wonderful advice. That's just incredibly difficult. Because you can't go off of somebody's property. Well, that requires paying for studies or it requires the city to pay for studies, all of which is very difficult. If you require people to pay into something that's gotta be done down the road, you gotta have a ton of backup for that. Monies have to be spent a certain way. They've gotta be spent within a certain time. I mean, there's a reason we don't have impact fees. The first time I was sent to study the bloody things was about '89. So it's been a while and we still don't have them. State law still doesn't. So wonderful suggestion, now sit.
Yeah, I kinda wish we had more time to study this whole thing. It'd be truly.
This?
Yeah.
Go ahead, so I've, it's in.
I mean, the whole area, the whole area right there. There's only 200 and something houses there or 200 and something residents.
200, yeah, units.
That's a lot with already what's building up out there, so it's my opinion. But I'm ready for a motion. If anybody's done with their comments.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZMA 2016-58. With all the staff's recommendations, six of, six recommendations from staff.
We close the public hearing too. Need a second, please. Got a motion by Mr. Moran, need a second, please.
A second?
Second by Mr. Smith. Be a roll call. Mr. Solsky?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Miss Visel?
Yes.
I'll vote no. I just think it needs to be studied more. That's just my opinion, so. Thank you. Come up to the side, please. I think it needs to be studied more. Bring me more of the, for this application here, the updated thing you gave us Monday. I think I left mine at the office Monday. If you don't, that's fine, sir.
I'll share with you.
I'll use Marx.
Yeah, I'll share.
You got the new one? We can share.
All right, this is ZMA 2016-59. The zone change request.
This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Zone change request on 186.78, 74 acres from A1 Agricultural and R2 Medium Density Residential to B5 Plan Commercial Park and P1 Professional Office. Site is located along the new interchange connector road.
Joe, could you go back? You said 175. It says on here 125. So it's different numbers when you're just reading.
Yeah, let me explain it.
125 there, 50 here.
Oh, I see, okay. Normally you read it not word for word, but.
Okay, yeah.
I see it all adds up.
It's going from two districts to two different districts, so that the acreage doesn't.
I'm following you now. Thank you.
Okay. So this site is on, mainly on the north side of the new interchange connector road between Champion Way and the new interchange. The request, the property is really zoned R2 about, the line is about here. So it's R2 to the south and it's still, it's A1 to the north. All this area was zoned R2 as part of the thoroughbred acres rezoning back in the 90s. The plan was to develop this all residential. There was an area of B4 commercial, but most of the commercial was to the south around this, you know, where the Speedway is and there's two legs of commercial down there. Most of the commercial was down by that interchange. The rest was residential. The future, the comprehensive plan, future land use map called this area urban residential. There was no real anticipation of this interchange when the 2006 comprehensive plan was done. So one thing we look at when analyzing the request is KRS 100, as we mentioned earlier. And there are kind of three parts to it. Does it comply with the comprehensive plan? If not, is it zoned inappropriately? And if not, have there been significant changes of a physical, economic, or social nature in the area that would justify the change? It, it partially, well, it doesn't, I'll just say, it doesn't comply with our current comprehensive plan, but it does comply with our updated plan draft map. So we're looking, we're working on the update this year. And we've looked at areas where more concentrated development would be appropriate. And we've kind of identified five development areas that either have the infrastructure in place or will have the infrastructure in place, have good access, or for other reasons would make good development nodes or areas of concentrated development. This was one of them. And the reason we identified this area is because of the new interchange, the new roads, the capacity of Champion Way, its ability to be connected to existing neighborhoods. So this residential area here is planned to develop and there's residential across the street. And there's a new multi-use path planned as part of this road improvement. So there's the opportunity to kind of connect into the residential areas with this development. So in our updated conference or our draft map, we are identifying this as kind of commercial mixed use. But that won't be finalized till early next year after it goes through public review. So at this point, it's still planned urban residential, so we have to look at the two other categories. The first, is it zoned inappropriately? Well, with this, when this new road is complete, yeah, probably it's zoned inappropriately because you're not gonna see major residential development directly on that road. Or, and this, around this interchange and with the access to the interstate, it's gonna be a high-demand area for commercial development. So agricultural is probably inappropriate in the near future and residential is probably inappropriate. So it somewhat complies with that. The second category is have there been major changes of economic, physical, or social nature? Well, this is a major physical change to the area, so it does comply with that section. So our finding is that it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan draft map and it does comply with the requirements of KRS to grant the zone change. Our only question is a question of scale because this is a large area being requested for commercial development in a city that has, where our comprehensive plan does try to guide a balanced growth pattern. So we do try to see commercial or try to promote commercial areas throughout the city where they're easily accessible from existing neighborhoods. And they do provide opportunities throughout the city. So that is a question of scale. Is this too much area for Georgetown in addition to all the commercial land we already have available? The second issue is there is floodplain on the property along what's Drive Run Creek and it's tributary, so it does come up into the site. And our comprehensive plan does guide us to ask for, or does, I guess, direct us to ask for floodplain areas and environmentally sensitive areas to be zoned C1, conservation, which we saw in the previous application as development occurs. So we are suggesting that these floodplain areas be zoned C1. We're also updating our flood maps this year, or we're not, but FEMA is updating our flood maps. So there may be some changes in that flood boundary. So that line may not be finalized at this point. And because of those environmentally considerations and the impact that this this development I've built out based on the traffic study that was submitted, and I won't go into all the details of the traffic study, but basically it's in the staff report, but the findings of the traffic study say that there's gonna have to be kind of major reconstruction of this new road to accommodate this development and buildout. Which, I mean, when I say major, it'll, the two intersections will have to rebuild, be rebuilt and signalized and there'll have to be a double turn lane added to Champion Way and other turn lane improvements. Combination of all those factors, we're recommending that although it is appropriate for commercial and office development, that we don't do the whole thing at this time. We're recommending that we, that, that just the area is zoned or planned for commercial retail on the concept plan. Here's the floodplain areas. It covers the backside of a lot of these lots. It comes up into here. To get into the concept plan real quick, this is the commercial retail, specialty retail area. Two boulevard entrances with the circular road around a lake water feature with outlots surrounding it with kind of a park-like space and open space area, kind of pedestrian trail walkway around the lake and around the site. So we're recommending that only this area, this commercial retail area be rezoned at this time along with this office area, which forms kind of a buffer between the growing residential area. This will allow it to kind of step down, but also allow for pedestrian connections across the boulevard and throughout the site, so it'll kind of tie it into the residential area. But it will leave off this large commercial park at this time until, until we kind of have a better idea of the traffic on the new interchange and connector road. Because it does also serve, will serve as a new way across the interstate in northern Georgetown. So will serve a need for kind of mobility just in northern Georgetown. But at this time, I would, that's our recommendation, that we don't do the whole thing at this, right now, but we hold off on a portion of it until the C1, the floodplains finalized and until, you know, the road is in and we kind of see the traffic levels and we can kind of have a good idea of how the road is working. Now, the traffic study that was submitted does include the whole thing, so it's kind of up to the applicants. This is my recommendation. If they wanted to go forward to and ask for the whole thing and regardless of your recommendation, ask for the whole thing at city council, they're free to do that. I don't know if they will, but if they don't, they, they may or may not want to redo that traffic study. I'm not sure how they want to handle that, but I think eventually this area will be developed. So it's better to have that traffic study for the entire thing at this point. But we are recommending approval, as stated in my staff report with the eight conditions of approval. Those are all pretty standard, the two at the end, seven and eight. Street trees are shown on the concept plan. I think it would be a good thing to, to keep in the final, in the development plan when it comes. So I am recommending that the street tree requirement stay. And I don't recall, I know street trees are required in B4. I don't think they're required in B5, but we'll leave that condition. I'm recommending we leave that condition regardless. And then the multi-use trail they're showing, it's shown at five feet and we really need a wider path in the open space area, so I'm recommending that be a minimum of eight feet. And then again, if this zone change is approved, condition four addresses it, but they will have to come back for development plan approval for every, regardless of how they phase it. But they'll have to get approval for the subdivision plat if they're gonna phase it and do it incrementally and then a development plan for each lot. I think that's all I had. Do you have questions?
Joe, are you, are you including the professional office space in what you recommended be?
Yes, I was recommending rezone from R2 and A1 to B5 for this area. And it's approximately 69 acres, I think, and then 10, 10 gross acres for the P1 Professional Office.
So in essence, it looks like we're removing based on the limited light industrial, professional office, commercial business lots one through 27.
That's right, yeah. Yes.
That's Joe's recommendation, if you don't see that. Y'all have any questions for Joe? The applicant here to speak?
He is, and thank you. My name is Al Gross with EA Partners, representing the Whitaker family, Ralph, Michelle, Cora, Kaylee. It's a great location, great facilities, and I think a nice plan. I agree with Joe's staff report, his presentation. I agree with the additional street trees, the additional path width. I think he makes a very good point, as I mentioned, at the workshop in reducing the proposal till we see just how effectively the new infrastructure handles the traffic. So we're willing, more than willing to do that. We are still debating with FEMA and will continue to debate, to debate with them the extent of the flood hazard area. I think the first meeting is this Wednesday and we'll be there. We've requested some information. We haven't yet received it, but we'll be there Wednesday to see if we can't prompt them to show us what they have or what they're thinking about. In the last, the original FEMA study had a particular level of flooding and new study in 2004 increased that flooding level by 10 feet. So that kind of surprises us and we're kind of wondering what this new additional study is gonna show. And it does, as Joe mentioned, impact basically some of the lots that we're proposing for the industrial professional use. the lots that we're proposing for the industrial professional use. So, we'll agree to, to, to zone the flood areas, floodplain flood hazard areas, C1 when, when it's, we're fully satisfied with that determination.
The eight acre water feature, that is actually eight acres, eight, eight surface acres of water, or that's-
That is eight surface acres of water.
It will be a detention pond, and that-
It'll be a stormwater, it will be a stormwater management facility.
In addition, yeah.
Yeah. But, it, it will have a surface area of eight acres, it'll be an attractive amenity and that's what it's there for. It's, it's, uh, uh, topographically, physically located in the right spot, uh, uh, and it, uh, it'll be a, it'll be a, a real, uh, a real, I think, attraction and something that's used a lot by the folks in and around.
Do I get to go fishing in it? Do I get to go fish in it?
I don't know, I haven't decided yet. See how this vote goes.
On the, on the part that Joe, that you're wanting to, uh, take out, is that, will that, will they have to come back before us?
Yes.
To get that approved? Bring it back again?
We got to be back in front of you too, final development concept on, on what we are zoning. So, you'll get, you'll get a shot at just the, the, the planned features, so.
Rob, you can fish in it until they get it built.
Yeah. That's what happened at Victoria. Oh, well.
Once they get it built and the water get in it.
Yep. Any other questions for the applicant?
So, Charlie, if there is a motion to be made, would it be making the motion to approve, assuming we approve, the proposed P1, proposed B5 with the removal of the limited light industrial, lot one through twenty-seven for further review?
Sounds perfectly clear to me.
Then I'll make that motion to approve it that way.
Sounds good to me, too.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Mr. Solsky.
And I don't, and I don't want to fish.
You don't?
But, I'll second-
I may be fishing with Rob.
And Mark, and that includes, uh, adopting the recommendations and findings and whatnot from the staff report.
Correct. Thank you. One through eight condition.
Motion by Mr. Solsky, a second by Mr. Shirley. This is a roll call. Mr. Solsky?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Mizell? I vote yes also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Joe, don't forget your iPad.
I'm getting hungry now.
I don't think I, I think I've been waiting for this two hours. I may have to get some of that.
Sure. I don't know. I can't get me a big drink.
Did you close the public hearing?
I have me a big drink. Yeah, we closed the public hearing on that one.
You did close the public hearing, I think.
Don't make me sleep. You got anything else, Joe? Landscape ordinance?
Yeah, I wanted to, um, have a brief discussion on the landscape.
You don't need an attorney for that.
Oh, yeah.
I think we do.
You can't leave it.
Um, we have the, the new A5 district.
Yes.
Um, Matt, while I talk, can you pull the zoning lines down? I don't remember exactly what the- The new, the new A5 district requires, and we saw this with the Belmere property and the Bevins, requires a landscape buffer between A5 and any A1 properties? Well, um, and it, and it requires landscaping and fencing. But, there's no, um, provision in the landscape buffers ordinance for that, that area, that transition from A5 to A1. So, the only thing we have to go on is the cluster ordinance, which requires a fifty-foot landscape buffer and a double row of, um, trees, forty foot on center, um, between cluster lots and the A1 property.
Cluster ordinance?
No, 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 just the A5. So, with the, with those two properties-
Landscape for the A-
It just says, this is what our, our ordinance says. Between A5 and A1, a landscape buffer shall be provided along the perimeter of all major A5 lots of budding agricultural A1 zone land in conformance with the requirements of the landscape and land buffers ordinance. Required trees shall be native species. So, it's, it refers to a table that doesn't have anything in it for it. So, we had to use the cluster. And honestly, I don't, I think it's a little overkill to require somebody with a five acre lot to put a double row of trees forty foot on center, um, to screen them, to screen themselves from an ag property. I think the fence is more important. And we had a situation with the Belmere property where they planted, they spent ten thousand dollars, or I guess fourteen thousand dollars they bonded, and they planted a double row of trees. And it was their own fault, I guess, but they had livestock on it still and the horses ate half the trees. So, and mainly the white spruce, they just, kind of the white spruce, they just, it's just gone. Uh, and they chewed up the other trees. So, um, I had to make them go back and replace all the white spruce and, um, get their landscape, um, their nursery to come and check all the other trees. And, um, it's just a huge expense for, um, a pro- um, for a situation where, um, I think the fence is critical between a residential lot, rural residential lot and a farm. It may be some type of landscaping, but maybe the two trees, every forty foot on center is not, um, is, might be overkill. So, I guess I just, we just kind of wanted guidance on what do, what do you think is appropriate? Whether we actually need any landscaping? And then the other question is, um, the definition of a major and minor. So, we apply these requirements to major subdivisions that have to be rezoned, which is four lots and above. So, like the Belmere property, that was five lots, but they subdivided two lots earlier and they were adjoining each other. And the five lots had to do it and the two lots didn't. So, and then we get minor subdivisions all the time where people create a five acre lot. Well, um, do they need to, should we require them to do the landscaping as well? Because it's the same situation, pretty much. I mean, it's a rural residential lot in the middle of a farming area. So, I guess we just kind of wanted to, before we brought a text change, we wanted to throw it out there. Uh, I'm thinking that we reduce it to one, a single row of trees, forty foot on center that are native species, or we eliminate the landscaping altogether and just keep the fencing requirement.
Now, if you do, if you do the forty foot, how, how close would you put that to the, to the line of tents?
Well-
If you put it fairly close, you could, you can fence around it and if you do have horses or whatever, then-
Yeah.
You can protect the trees so there's not, whether it's horses, cattle, sheep, whatever, they-
Well, see, it's a, it, that was an unusual situation because, well, I guess some five acre lot owners will have a horse or two, but most don't. And that would-
Yes.
I mean, typically, this was a situation where it was a fa- small farm, they own like forty acres, that had horses on it, and they split it, they kept the horses on it for while the landscapers were here.
That's room full.
So, but, I think in most cases, um, you know, they'll, I don't know, they'd know better, but, um-
I think the fence is the most important thing.
Yeah.
I do, too. I don't even understand why we have any landscape at all.
Some landscaping, I, I don't know, about every forty feet, but I think it would be nice to have one at least every, every eighty to hundred, hundred feet, just, just a tree, just, just to break up the-
Just to have more, um, trees planted.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good for, it's good to plant a tree here and there regardless.
Similar to what Mr. Smith is saying.
And you, you deal with that more than anybody, I think.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't do way with them totally.
So, maybe reducing it to a single row of trees.
And maybe even-
Native species.
And maybe even spacing more like Mr. Smith's suggestion. I think eighty's too much, you know, maybe sixty. If you're going to change it, we might as well change it, right?
Yeah.
It's not more difficult.
Sixty or fifty.
Typical five acre track.
They would just make it easier on, you know, expense-wise, if they needed to protect them, it would make it easier to protect because we have, they would have fewer of them. But, I, I agree with Steve that I wouldn't want to do way with it completely because you, I think you do need something to break up the, you know, is it, yeah, it's just, that's just my personal opinion. But, I mean, and obviously the fence has got to stay.
If you're going in a five acre track, it's going to be, what?
Would you, would you suggest-
Two hundred feet wide by five hundred feet long, it'd be close to-
What, how do y'all feel about the fencing requirement for minor, for all five acre lots? Even minors? Because now we don't-
I think they need to be fenced.
Yeah, I think it needs to stay the same.
All the same. That'd, that'd make it easier for you guys, too, and less confusing. Just, you know, just make it the same. There shouldn't, I don't know why there'd be any difference.
I don't either. Doesn't make sense, really, why there is.
Okay. Well, we can work on putting together a draft text amendment to do that and we'll bring it back and do a public hearing, so that people-
Sounds good.
Okay.
Next.
Um, the next thing is surplus property. We have an old, um, um, vehicle, our oldest vehicle.
Where you want for it?
Two thousand and six, two thousand dollars. Um, but, John Carter got into an accident a couple of years ago, or maybe it was last year, um, within the last couple of years. In total, the vehicle, we're going to replace it. Uh, we haven't replaced it yet because, um, you know, we've been sharing the engineering this vehicle that I want to surplus. So, I, I'd like to surplus this older vehicle, um, something that's ten years old, and, um, just buy it, and probably a year or two old, um, SUV as a replacement. Um, and Charlie told me I had to, had to get a vote on surplusing it in order to get rid of it. So, I need a vote on, um, surplusing a two thousand and seven, um, Ford Explorer.
Six or seven?
I, I'm actually not a hundred percent sure.
When, when in a motion to-
It's four.
Surplus the vehicle?
Oh, make a motion to surplus the vehicle.
How many miles is that?
Mr. Cannon, Mr. Cannon makes the motion to surplus the vehicle.
Not huge, but-
A second by Mr. Mizell, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You got it, Joe.
All right. The li- okay, one last, well, um-
Can you replace that with a bicycle?
What?
Say, can you replace that with a bicycle? So, we can start using the bike, bike lanes?
Sure, in town.
We've got, we got it on a bicycle.
Yeah. Um, one last thing, and this is why Brent brought this up earlier about the impact fees. Um, this is Brent's last month with us. He's, um, submitted his resignation, he's going back. He didn't know I was, I don't know if he knew I was going to bring this up. Um, he's going to go back to work in the private sector as he transitions into retirement. Uh, and I'd just like to say, I appreciate everything you've done for the planning commission. Uh, there's nobody in the office more valuable, except maybe Mary, and more knowledgeable about what's gone on in the county over the last thirty years. And I'm sorry to see him go.
And we don't have to accept it.
My legal, my legal advice is a motion not to accept. Understand his case.
I make a motion not to accept.
How, how could you possibly give up a job where you don't do anything and go back in the private sector? Well, now, I take that back. I know you do have to put up with John and Perry.
It's actually, it's stress.
Huh?
Stress.
Stress.
You might not think they're stressed, but I get in the middle.
I know. I, I, I was very facetious. I, I, you know I know. Yeah.
Brent, we're going to hate to see you go.
Yeah.
You're a big part of this right here.
You know, I mean-
You usually got a, you usually got a good answer for every question we have and, I mean, you know more about this county than most of us sitting up here, I'd say, you know?
I've been around for a while.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I, I tried to retire straight out, but my wife said, no, that's not the way.
She don't want you to work on your cars all the time.
Doug doesn't want him at home.
We understand. I believe he's collected that fifty-eight thousand dollars that the guy said he owed him.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a long time for him.
Well, Brent, we sure hate to see you go, so. But, we wish you the best.
I hate to go because the staff, I will say, this, the staff is very good.
Yeah. I think we got a good staff and I-
Runs very, very well.
Yeah. I hate to see it kind of break up that way.
We'll find some other.
You'll help us in that, won't you?
Yeah, yeah.
And they won't be nearly as hard-headed as you.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's all I have.
No, you don't. You got one more there. You never introduce it, Andrew.
Oh, I haven't? Andrew?
No, he didn't get introduced the last minute.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Andrew.
If you would go ahead and introduce him, too, please.
You probably need to come up here and talk then.
No.
You haven't.
No, it's too late. Andrew, we love you, man.
This is Andrew Tackett. He's been, um, in the office for two months now. He's, um, working the front desk, answering phones and doing, um, we're going to, he's going to ramp up in responsibility, uh, I promise.
You should have introduced him at the beginning and made him, made him speak in front of everybody.
Yeah.
That would have been better.
But, Andrew's got a lot of experience, he's got a lot of, um, he worked for the state. He's in, he, he works for the EMS, or EMA, sorry, EMA, um, among like twenty other things. Um, but, he's got a lot of knowledge, so it's good to have him in the office.
Good to.
And he, he can come next time and do a staff report or something, or at least talk or something.
You got any engineering background?
Now, I'm a local emergency manager at FEMA, or the auditor for department revenue. Got a government experience.
All right, good to.
Defense contractor, so, yeah, that's great, everything.
Joe, the, the floodplain thing, meeting?
Yeah.
Is that next week?
Um, is that the fourteenth? Sixteenth.
Thought they said next Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday at the, at the library of, what are the hours?
Uh, we're going to set up at four thirty, but it's five to eight.
Five to eight at the library on the sixteenth.
Almost as long as these meetings.
Any more? Anybody else have anything?
I'll make a motion and adjourn.
Thanks.
Meeting adjourned.